Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's April 4th, 2019, public meeting. Noting the presence of a quorum, I would like to call this meeting to order. Our first order of business today is a procedural matter. The President has not appointed a new Chair of the Commission. The bylaws require the Commission to elect one of its members to perform the function of Chairman at the start of each meeting, with the understanding that the Vice Chairman is a likely person to be elected to run the meeting. Thus, to officially convene the open session, the Commission must nominate and vote on who should run the April open session.
So moved.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded that Mr. Gallus, the Commission's Vice Chair, would run today's meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all Commissioners for electing me to run this meeting today. Agenda item two is a report of the Vice Chairman. I'd just like to acknowledge the Chairman, the Commissioners who were able to attend today's field trip to U.S. Park Police Stables on the Mall. That's an item that's going to be discussed later today. I'd also like to thank the NPS and the Mall Police for providing the informative tour, as well as all the Commissioners who were able to attend. Agenda item three is a report of the Executive Director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I have one item that I would like to call to the Commission's attention regarding a submission that you'll be reviewing later this month. On March 20th, the Mayor of the District of Columbia released her proposed budget, which includes the District's Fiscal Year 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Program. Pursuant to the National Capital Planning Act, the Commission reviews the District's capital program to identify and comment upon any federal interest that may be affected. Last year, the D.C. Council's Commission Representative requested that NCPC provide its comments on the District's Capital Improvements Program early in the D.C. Council's review process so that NCPC's comments could be considered. If the Commission were to review and vote on NCPC's proposed comments at our next scheduled meeting on May 2nd, Council will not have your comments when it begins its markup of the budget on or about April 26th. With that in mind, and consistent with your bylaws, the Commission's Executive Committee has approved taking a notational vote for the Commission's comments on this program. Secretary will email our staff recommendations to the Commission members for review and vote in mid-April, and we will then transmit the Commission action to the D.C. Council at that time. So with your permission, we will go ahead and do that, and that actually concludes my remarks for today. You do have a written report in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Okay. Agenda item four is a legislative update. Ms. Schuyler.
I do have some things today. First, I'd like to report that Public Law Number 116-93, which is actually a Conservation, Management, and Recreation Act, did include a provision regarding an Adams Memorial, and this became law on March 12th. In that bill, there's a provision that says that replaces the current, replaces the current Adams Memorial Foundation with the Adams Memorial Commission. It authorizes the Commission to consider and formulate plans for a memorial, including the nature, location, design, and construction of the memorial. As established by previous law, it allows the memorial to be in Area 1, but not in the Reserve, and it terminates the Commission in 2025. So this has been, this bill's been around, or this proposed memorial has been around for a long time, so perhaps this will be a new beginning. I also wanted to, just to touch upon some proposed legislation, which has recently been in the news, but for which, because it was so recently introduced, I don't have text yet, and that would be H.R. 1883, which calls for the sale of the RFK Stadium to the District, and H.R. 1980 and Senate 959, which call for the establishment within the Smithsonian Institution of a Woman's History Museum. I will have the text shortly, and we'll report on these next month. That concludes.
Some very important things happening. Thank you for keeping us abreast. Appreciate it. Okay. Agenda item five is the consent calendar items. There are two consent calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for security improvements to East Street Northwest between 15th and 17th Streets, submitted by the National Park Service. And the second is for entrance alterations at Building 10 at the naval support activity in Bethesda, Maryland, that have been submitted by the Department of the Navy. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Thank you. It's moved, it's been moved and seconded. Please indicate your approval by indicating, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. First on the open session is Agenda Item 6A, to approve the final site and building plans for the Franklin Park rehabilitation. Ms. Ridgely.
Good afternoon, Commission members. The National Park Service has submitted a final site and building plan for Franklin Park. The Commission approved the preliminary submission in December 2018, commented favorably on the overall project, and provided some specific comments on several aspects of the design. So today, I'll focus on those final refinements related to your comments. To orient you, Franklin Park is located in downtown Washington, six blocks northeast of the White House. It's bound by 13th, 14th K and I Streets. The park is an entire block, about 4.8 acres, one of the largest downtown parks, serving residents, workers, and tourists. The Downtown DC bid currently works with the Park Service to maintain and program the park, and both organizations, along with the District of Columbia, have partnered to transform this place into a showcase for the city. Now, the park has been a popular destination for Washingtonians since the mid-1800s, and it's still very active today, but it is in need of significant repairs. And to accomplish this rehabilitation, the project is jointly funded through a collaborative local-federal partnership, which is the first of its kind in Washington. The last submission built off the results of the 2014 NEPA and Section 106 process, where a new café and children's garden and updated fountain were identified by the public as high priorities. The design incorporated these new elements into the existing historic park infrastructure, which includes the Central Plaza, the Commodore Berry statue, and the walking paths. Now, the Commission approved the December plan and provided guidance to refine that central fountain and plaza area. And other comments focused on the café area and its connections to I Street. They wanted additional details on the children's garden and space for bus and food truck queues. Now, the final site plan incorporates the Commission's December recommendations, adapting this landscape to blend new elements in with the existing historic fabric of the park to provide an engaging downtown destination. So I'll cover the major park improvements and how they've evolved since December. These include the café area at the south end, the children's garden to the east, the central fountain and plaza, and I'll also cover some updates to the sidewalks, walkways, and site furnishings. So first up, the café and plaza. The overall space program remains the same, providing a café amenity for daily park users and special events. To the left in pink are the restrooms, and park operational and storage space is shown here in yellow at the far left. Now, the final submission includes revised plans for the all-gender restroom, which will have two access points, one from the café and one directly from the park during regular operating hours. The transparent entrance from the park side, shown on the right, instills a feeling of safety and visibility when entering the space. Stormwater management remains an integral component within the area, this area of the park. The green roof, rain screen, and bioretention areas along the south side ensures the park retains all stormwater on-site for a 90th percentile rain event. So that means that we have over 12,000 gallons of treatment volume here that may be eligible for stormwater retention credits. Materials used in this area of the park include precast pavers for the pedestrian mall, stone for the rain screen and restroom cladding, and glass walls for the café to retain as much transparency into the park as possible from I Street and Point South. This image also highlights one of the issues discussed at the December Commission meeting regarding access from I Street. As you can see here, the entrance is not ADA accessible at this location. However, there are two accessible entrance points into the park in the café. One is just west of the café here, you can see at the left side of the photo, behind the pedestrians, and the other is to the east, kind of behind and to the right of this vantage point. Overall, the materials palette pulls inspiration from other National Park Service designs with glass, wood, and stone. Staff notes the use of E-Pay for the deck around the café is discouraged by many designers and municipalities due to unsustainable harvesting practices, even if it is FSC certified. The landscape design for this area uses a variety of shade-tolerant shrubs and perennials to draw people into the park from I Street. This part of the park uses bioretention areas to capture most of the site's stormwater runoff, so these plants are able to tolerate periods of heavy rain, as well as drier soil, during drought. The entire park will employ irrigation to establish the plants, trees, and terps, but the intent is to really limit its use after the landscape is established in one to two years. Next up is the children's garden. As part of the December 2018 revised preliminary review, the Commission encouraged the use of natural materials in creating a unique play space for children. Taking cues from the park's pastoral setting and ecological context as part of the Potomac watershed, many of the proposed elements embody a more natural approach to play than typically found in Washington's play spaces. The refined design uses subtle grading techniques to enclose the space and encourage supervised children to remain within the garden limits, limiting egress and ingress without the use of fencing. Grading ranges from a four to a 10-foot difference between that main play area and the top of the berms. Staff encourages the bid to work with Planet Word and other nearby organizations to provide park programming for children and families that take advantage of this new park amenity. The play areas include a slide, an area where children can develop their balance and climbing skills, and an exploration space that looks sort of like a nest, complete with examples of animal tracks one might find throughout the Mid-Atlantic region. The landscape design for this area provides a very durable and child-friendly palette of shrubs and grasses that provide a variety of textures and colors. Many are native to the Mid-Atlantic region, and all are urban and drought tolerant. The next area is the central fountain and plaza. Now, at the December 2018 Commission meeting, you may recall a series of nine fountain options that were presented to rehabilitate the fountain. The Action recommended an updated design reflecting options that balance the historic preservation, Central Plaza programming, and the overall design and scale of the fountain and plaza, shown here, generally in this green section. Those were options 2 through 7. The final site design strikes that balance, but in a way that's different from those December 2018 options, yet still effective in creating a flexible area to serve as one of the park's most engaging places. The existing plaza dimensions would remain, and the existing fountain and coping will be rehabilitated. This includes a minor adjustment of the basin height to accommodate a new jet and lighting infrastructure for a programmable and easier-to-maintain central fountain feature. Building off the historic fountain, that large single jet is enhanced with the addition of two smaller play jets that are flush with the refurbished bluestone pavers. Those would be located just outside of the coping, to the east and west sides of the fountain. Those play jets will be turned on and off depending upon visitor demand and the special event schedule. The central fountain hearkens back to the earlier days of the park, when a single jet was used to draw people in. The play jets will be more evocative of that mid to late 20th century, when there were two smaller jets employed within that basin. So combining these two elements, the new design expands visitor opportunities to interact with the fountain, provides that more traditional fountain design that's becoming harder to find in Washington's parks, along with newer play jets to encourage more families to come and visit. This flexible approach allows the character-defining park feature here to serve as a year-round amenity. As part of the redesign, eight trees in and around the central plaza will be removed and replaced with honey locust trees and additional canopy trees just beyond the plaza to provide shade. Staff noted in the EDR that the current design shows limited shade and a reduced tree canopy compared to current conditions, and the Commission of Fine Arts made a similar comment during their March review of this project. So based on this feedback, the applicant will be adding additional trees to provide a more comfortable and inviting space for the park visitors. The design team has indicated that it would be possible to add a bosque of about two to three trees around each bench, shown here in orange, and that trees in the outer panels surrounding the plaza could be taller and denser to provide additional shade. And the interim movable tables with umbrellas could provide shade while the trees are maturing. Understory plantings will protect the root systems of the trees, provide year-round color, and help frame the space. The central plaza will also be home to an interpretive exhibit on the history of the land. It will feature four periods of history, ranging from the pre-Columbian era to its current role as an urban park. This was an element originally designed for the café plaza area to the south, but after additional discussion, the design team thought this important story should be told at the historic and cultural heart of the park. This area will serve as one of the primary locations for special events and provides the flexibility necessary to create a year-round active space for park visitors. Staff supports the final central plaza and fountain design and encourages the bid to provide an active and engaging program of year-round activities for park visitors. The last piece of this presentation focuses on the sidewalks, park walkways, and site furnishings. One of the topics discussed at the December Commission meeting focused on providing space for bus and food truck patrons to queue without disrupting pedestrian flows. So the design team updated the approach and expanded the queuing space for buses on 14th K and I Streets, as well as food trucks along 13th. So for the bus stops, the new bump-out spaces are provided at the four locations shown here in red, for a total of 1,100 additional square feet of queuing space. And the four existing bus shelters that are there now are relocated to protect people waiting at those stops. 14th Street overall is currently a 15-foot sidewalk, which is the widest of the four surrounding the park. Now, 13th Street obviously experiences a lot of foot traffic from the food trucks, and it too is being expanded to match that 14th Street width of 15 feet. This additional space will be used for queuing, 12 new benches, as well as three new trash receptacles. In addition, the bike racks are included at four park entrances surrounding the park, and while a Capitol Bike Share Station is not currently located on this block, the opportunity does exist to locate here in the future. Related to those park perimeter entrance issues, the edge of the park is enhanced with a colorful palette of native and urban-tolerant perennials, grasses, and shrubs, and the tree canopy here is used to create an edge around the perimeter and help frame those four entrances. New paving materials along the park's walkways are in exposed aggregate concrete finish, edged by a quarter-round curb, consistent with NPS park standards and similar to the existing design today. Now, the rehabilitated park will have a number of permanent and flexible seating options. Existing historic park benches will be refurbished with new wooden slats, and eight new custom benches, inspired by the existing bench design, will be added in that central plaza area. The children's garden will have a large log-style bench located at the entrance to this space. And flexible seating with tables will be provided around the café and in the central plaza area. As with the existing flexible tables and chairs, these will be maintained by the bed. The final submission also included new details on the park's lighting plan. Now, the partners anticipate evening use here, including special events to help activate the neighborhood. And the current lighting includes Saratoga fixtures installed here in the 1980s. Now, those will be refurbished and reused in their existing locations. Those will be enhanced by additional furniture and handrail undermounted lighting, which will be installed around the café and central plaza areas to increase the visibility there. Pole lights will be installed at the children's garden to ensure safety at night. That covers all the changes to the project since the December review. With that, it is the Executive Director's recommendation to approve the final site and building plans for the rehabilitation of Franklin Park. These are the additional recommendations. Most of these were covered in the presentation, but to wrap up, I would like to highlight that the design celebrates and respects the historic character of the park while enhancing the current and future experience for park visitors, which is a big challenge when adapting design landscapes, and that the public-private partnership between the Park Service, District, and Downtown bid to revitalize and manage Franklin Park can serve as a blueprint for other parks in Washington. And on that note, I'd like to introduce Alex Block from the Downtown DC bid. He's here to say a few words about this innovative partnership. Now, when Alex wraps up, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also have the design team from Land Collective and Studios Architects, as well as representatives from the Park Service and District here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon. As Sarah said, my name is Alex Block. I'm with the Downtown DC Business Improvement District, and very excited to be here today. This is the culmination of a years-long partnership between the Downtown bid, our friends at the National Park Service, and with the district government. Our partnership for improving Franklin officially began in 2012. It was a long time ago, and our, as part of that process, we came together to form a shared vision and a set of goals, and codified those in a document that has been really beneficial over this lengthy process, to come back and refer to again and again, as we've had a number of staff changes, leadership changes, in all of our organizations over that time span. For every step of the process, it's helped keep us on track. We're excited about this partnership because we feel it helps allow each partner to play to their strengths. The Park Service gets to have a chance to revitalize what we think is one of their signature assets, but it doesn't have the same national profile as some of the other parks we have here in Washington. The District is able to gain local amenities for both residents and workers in downtown, and for the bid, it allows us to really step in and step up our game in terms of managing and operating public space in downtown, and really allows us to have the signature park space that we often feel we have lacked over the last year, few years. I would like to say a little bit, one of the most important things that we will be doing from the bid's perspective is programming the space, and I wanted to give you a sense of the kind of programming we have in mind. Programming will generally fall into four different categories. First of all, that will be daily programming. This will be the kind of stuff like outdoor reading rooms and libraries, games, existing more passive activities like the tables and chairs that we have out there today. We're looking forward to taking that up an extra notch. We will also have seasonal programming events that'll try to make use of some of the new and revitalized spaces in the park. For example, as Sarah mentioned in her presentation, the plaza will be available to host events, whether it be something like a holiday market, similar to the one that we currently run near the National Portrait Gallery, or a farmer's market or things like that. Lawns will be available for movie nights or workout classes, both of which we have done in other parks around downtown previously. There will also be interpretation available, as Sarah mentioned, the interpretation, or interpretive signage, but also the National Park Service will have ranger-led talks and tours available in the park. And finally, we will have the capability to host large-scale events in the park. This is something we feel will be very beneficial in order to bring people into the space and also help via sponsorships and fees generate some revenue for the operation of the park. It's something we've been planning on for a while. We have adjusted our budget accordingly to account for the increased, expected increased cost for operating and maintaining the park, and we're very excited to have your potential approval and begin construction.
Thank you, Mr. Block, and thank you, Ms. Ridgely. Excellent presentations. Just ask if anyone has any questions or comments, please. Yes, Mr. Cash.
Well, I just really want to thank the design team for the response on some of the additional queuing space for the buses. I think that that's a really big improvement. I brought that up last time, so I think it's great. And also, the accessibility to I Street, I think it still might be a challenge with making sure people don't decide to walk through that kind of low point there, because there is a lot of foot traffic there now, but I think that overall, it's become a much better design. I did have a question, though, since you started talking about programming. I've had this question ongoing, but one of the big programmatic uses of the park, especially on the weekends, is a lot of ministries and churches essentially becomes a soup kitchen on the weekends, and that's a pretty heavy use of it. And I'd imagine that that's not the programming that you all are necessarily anticipating in the future, and we've had a lot of other services like MLK, that's not kind of in the future plans, and that was another big kind of homeless services access point. Are you working with the District to try and identify other places where some of that programming that's not necessarily compatible with the new park will go, or is it something that you're anticipating being able to still provide for on the weekends?
Yes. So to, my understanding is, a lot of that programming currently is often supposed to obtain a permit, but they sometimes do not. So we've been working with the Park Service on trying to, you know, resolve that issue as well. One of the other things that the Downtown bid has been, one of our recent accomplishments, is we recently opened, in partnership with the district government, a day services center about a block away from here at the New York Avenue Presbyterian Church. It's currently open Monday through Friday during the day. It has all sorts of wraparound services for people experiencing homelessness. It's a wonderful facility, very beneficial to help connect people experiencing homelessness with the kinds of social services that would be beneficial to them. So we are working to eventually expand that operation to seven days a week, and we'd also like to encourage any individuals or groups who are interested in volunteering to try to channel their efforts into providing those services at the day services center, where we have a kitchen available and we have other facilities to help keep things structured and orderly. That's something we are absolutely working on with both the district government and the National Park Service.
Actually, just one other point I was going to make. So I think it's great that you're able to restore the fountain and keep a lot more of that history there, and you noted a few times in the presentation that it's actually a lot of bluestone that's down there, and now there's all these new interpretive features. I think it'd be great if we acknowledged that bluestone is the state rock of the District of Columbia. Just a little bit of history there.
Well, I didn't know there was such a thing as a state rock.
I just saw it too. Capital source.
Anyone else have questions? Mr. White.
Just a couple of comments and a thank you to the team for addressing the shade issue. I thought that was a pretty critical one, because if the kids are playing in the fountains and the parents want to watch them, they don't want to sit in the sun if it's warm enough to be playing in fountains. So I think that was a really nice way to address that. And I appreciate your comments about programming and thinking about them in small scale and large scale, and I'm curious how you'll work with the community so it's not overprogrammed, because a lot of, I think that's a tendency these days, to program every inch of a park. And I think we need to be mindful that there should be places that are quiet, or even the whole park be quiet, so the people who live next to it can use it. So I'm curious how you plan to address that healthy tension there.
Yes, no, that's an excellent point. I am, as part of our original vision, and in culminating that, we did a number of site visits to parks across the city and around, or around the country as well, to understand how those, how different parks deal with that issue and strike that balance. And in part of forming our shared vision, we definitely wanted to come down sort of in the middle ground. We want to have a park that is programmed and active, but it's not going to be Bryant Square Park. It's not going to be of that level. And so that has very much been the part of the shared vision. I think having our principles enshrined in a document has been helpful to help keep us on that path throughout this lengthy process. But that, yes, that is absolutely something we're aware of. Of course, you know, we'll have to see how things go when we start getting into it, and you know, there's, we have our plan, but we have to execute on the plan, but that is absolutely a principle that we want to aspire to, to not, to not do too much.
Mr. Wright.
I would like to say something nice about the materials palette to the design team, because it's really, you haven't spared anything, and that's pretty nice. Plant selection, too. But that's what leads me to my next question, or concern about construction management. As we were talking today on our field trip, in GSA, we refer to this euphemistically, for those of us who are skeptical, as resolution in the field, which is a nice term for value engineering, that happens in some PM's head on-site. So are you, is, are there plans for, for construction oversight that's extremely rigorous to preclude such things from happening? Because I'm asking actually for a reason. The materials palette and plant selection are really pretty critical, and those are the things that sort of fall away somewhere between final approval and implementation and execution. So I was just wondering if there was a safeguard put in place.
If I could speak to that.
Thank you.
Sure. So this, in many ways, is an unusual project in that it's the first time we're doing this with the District of Columbia, but it's certainly not our first partner project. You know, all of our memorials are essentially undertaken as, as partner projects, and we maintain an extremely careful oversight over all of those projects as, projects as well. And of course, we have other major partners. You'll be seeing another partner project later on today. But actually, I would like to invite Sean Caneley, who's the Chief of Professional Services for National Mall Memorial Parks, who has decades, decades, or at least over a decade of experience.
I don't know.
Working projects like that.
I haven't been here in a couple of years. I've been busy with the Eisenhower Memorial that you guys approved a couple of years ago, so now we're under construction. But anyhow, so as Peter said, we've been very involved with this project, with the bid and the District of Columbia, and it was very important for us to maintain some of the historic features of the park. So we worked real hard with the State Historic Preservation Officer, most recently, to retain the central fountain, and we really are looking at maintaining and keeping as much of that historic fabric as possible. So meaning back to your question about the oversight, so here at the National Mall Memorial Parks, we have a group of planners, architects, engineers, landscape architects that are assigned to all of these projects. landscape architects that are assigned to all of these projects. So someone from my shop will be heavily involved with construction oversight, reviewing submittals, and being part of that whole construction process. So they're very astute to maintaining parks over standard, so, you know, you can rest assured that we're looking at it from, you know, our interests, too. And certainly, we're in the business for preservation and protection of all these resources. Does that answer your question?
Not really, but I'm okay with it. I mean, meaning, so it doesn't, oh, sorry. It doesn't answer my question because I think I'm really asking, are you specifically, I'm assuming that you have CM services and that it will be rigorously, you're saying yes. I wasn't necessarily talking about the historic fabric, which of course is important. I'm talking about the design as specified.
Sure.
I've just, now that the weather's nice, I've been out visiting some of our recent projects, and shucks, they don't turn out exactly as designed. And that's, that's what I'm, that's my new thing that I'm paying attention to because there's only so much we can do to get it to as good a place as it, as we can get it in, in, in construction documents, and then something happens. And it's usually a tiny little thing, and it's the little things that can kill a project. And I'm just, this is my latest obsession. Sorry. Thank you for humoring me. That was a decent answer.
But just to be sure, the National Park Service has been very involved with this design, and we will continue to do so until it's 100%. And we will be issuing a construction permit as well. So until we're satisfied, we're not going to issue that permit. And then working closely with the district, they're going to be providing the, or issuing the contract itself, but we are heavily involved in that.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Cash.
Can I follow up on that? So who's going to be responsible for making those calls about design? Will it be the district and DGS? Will it be the Park Service? Because I mean, we're kind of, the district's footing the bill for it, but I mean, it's a unique new project. So is it, if it's value engineering, does, will the Park Service push that on the district or will the district push back? So what's the, what's kind of going to be the management?
So, I mean, we're getting, we're getting past the point of any significant value engineering, I think. I mean, we're, you know, you never know where the pricing is going to come in, but it's not going to be an either or, right? I mean, we have a, I think, a very strong partnership with the district, with the Department of General Services, and with the consultants that they've hired to execute the project to the standards that, you know, have been incorporated into the design. So, you know, if we reach the point where we have to look seriously at cost, it's not going to be one or the other making the call. I think that the district is going to be hands-on because they will hold the construction contract, but we don't expect that any significant decisions will be made without our input. And of course, if anything changes enough that it's different from what it's going to seem, we'd have to bring it back. So we don't intend to do that. We don't like to spend any more time here than we have to. Well, I mean, I love being here, but.
We may go take it personally, Peter.
Thank you. Speaking for all applicants. No, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'd just like to add a little bit of comment. I find this park to be exciting. It's, it's something for everyone, which is something that I really enjoy about public spaces, that children areas, family areas, quiet, active, food trucks, food, restrooms, the whole, the whole range. It's not often that we are able to see a project that checks so many boxes in such an exquisite design, so really applaud that. And one of my favorite little urban parks is in Los Angeles, downtown Los Angeles, next to the Los Angeles Library. And this park and that pavilion building, the café building, reminds me of the restaurant that I've eaten in a few times. Can't think of the name of the restaurant right now. I've had a lot of wine there when I drink, when I go there. But a lovely building and which will, I think, create sort of a transparency, but at the same time establishes an anchor at that end of the park in an exciting way. So really want to congratulate the team and thank you for the responsiveness to our comments. Thank you. Okay, so can I entertain a motion to approve the final site and building plans for this project?
To move.
Second, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on the open session is Agenda Item 6B, Approval of Preliminary and Final Site and Building Plans for Exterior Alterations and Streetscape Improvements at the Washington Convention Center. A small project, right? Mr. Webb will make today's presentation.
Events DC has submitted preliminary and final site development and building plans for exterior alterations and streetscape improvements at the Walter E. Washington Convention Center for your review. The final design presents an opportunity to activate pedestrian experience around the three blocks that encompass the convention center. The commission approved the concept plans for the convention center a year ago on April 5th, 2018. As you can see on this map, the convention center is located at 801 Mount Vernon Place, northwest in downtown Washington, DC, within the Shaw neighborhood and across from Mount Vernon Square. The Carnegie Library is located in Mount Vernon Square to the south of the convention center, and you may recall that in 2017, the commission approved Events DC's rehabilitation of the library and in preparation for the Apple flagship store. The convention center encompasses three city blocks bordered by 7th Street to the east, 9th Street to the west, and N Street to the north. The convention center was completed in 2003 and named for Walter E. Washington, the city's first home rule mayor. It has a gross building area and footprint of over 2 million square feet. In addition to its functions as a convention center with exhibit space and meeting rooms, the building also houses the administrative offices for Events DC as well as retail spaces at Gray. Staff notes that the convention center is located among several historic districts, which together have become one of the district's most successful and active entertainment areas. These photographs show the vibrancy that can be found in the Shaw and Penn Quarter districts. Staff finds that the proposed alterations and streetscape improvements at the convention center should add to this energy while being sensitive to the surrounding historic context of the adjacent neighborhoods. As I mentioned, the final plan envisions opportunities to activate the pedestrian experience through exterior alterations to the building and streetscape improvements. As we saw at the concept review, Events DC and their design team identified problematic conditions around the convention center shown in these images, which included underutilized sidewalks with minimal seating, unhealthy street trees, inadequate lighting, and empty windows. The final plan strategy to enliven, to enliven the convention center consists of new exterior alterations to the building, including introducing retail kiosk, an exterior stair and rooftop terrace with balconies, new public art installations, new wayfinding, streetscape alterations, including new paving, planting beds and seating, and new exterior lighting to emphasize entrances into the building and highlight the new retail kiosk. These components mirror the strategy in the concept plan reviewed last year with additional design refinements and material information included as requested by the commission. Staff does note that while included in the concept review, proposed changes and alterations to the 7th Street, Mount Vernon Square metro station entrance and plaza are not part of this application and will be submitted to the commission at a future date for review. Therefore, staff recommends that the applicant continue to coordinate with WAMADA on the proposed alterations to the convention center metro entrance and plaza area. Now I will walk you through the exterior alterations presented in the final design, beginning with the retail component consisting of new retail kiosk on 9th Street. To help orient you to the area of the convention center, since it is three blocks, we are, to the area we are discussing, a site plan will be located on the left side of the slide with discussion area outlined in yellow. Currently, three large niche puncture the west elevation on 9th Street and provide pedestrians with a glimpse into the concourse below, but do not provide physical access into the convention center. The final plan, excuse me, the final plan proposes to insert retail kiosk into these three niche as shown in this rendering. The kiosk will consist of red tinted chromatic glass capsules with the intent of serving as retail pop-ups, drawing pedestrians up 9th Street into direct engagement with the A similar treatment is proposed further along on 9th Street for six alcoves, alcoves in the convention center's middle building. Here is a photograph showing the existing conditions. This rendering shows the new alterations. These kiosks will also feature the red tinted chromatic glass inserts through the existing alcove spaces and project into the concourse within the building. Four of these kiosks will take advantage of the extra space and offer multi-season retail zones, allowing for enclosed occupation during cold months. And here are images showing the existing interior condition for the middle building and a rendering of, on the right, showing the insertion of the retail kiosk. And Comic-Con.
Yeah. Perfect.
At the corner of 9th and N Street, the existing street-level retail spaces blend in with the massive continuous presence of the building. In addition, over half this elevation is comprised of translucent fenestration meant to disguise the active truck ramp on the second level. The final plan removes the translucent fenestration on the second level and replaces it with undulating balconies. The new balconies are carried around the corner of N Street and are components of a new rooftop terrace, accessed from the street level by a new exterior stair on N Street. And here are additional renderings showing the N Street stair as well as material treatments on the N Street elevations. And one additional rendering showing the rooftop terrace. Events DC does envision that the new terrace will be publicly accessible. The applicant has provided additional information on the materials as requested by the commission at the concept review. The materials for the kiosk, balconies, and stair include baked enamel metal, baked enamel metal panels, color tinted glass, blackened metal, and polished stainless steel. Now we will shift to the plan strategy for introducing public art around the exterior of the convention center. The art examples you will see in the following images are for illustrative purposes, while Events DC continues to explore options, opportunities to work with artists for these locations. Currently, as shown in this photograph, a series of hanging lamps span over L Street but offer little to signify the location as a major entrance into the building nor to define any character to the two-block-long passage. The final plan proposes that the large span between the two L Street-facing elevations of the convention center offers an opportunity for a site-specific hanging urban art installation to provide excitement to the passage and signify the location as a point of arrival as shown in this rendering. This photograph of the passage through the M Street tunnel shows that it is long and dark and offers little to engage pedestrians walking along the sidewalks through the tunnel from 7th to 9th Streets. For the final plan, the long ceiling of the tunnel offers an opportunity to connect with changes to the new frames containing rotating artwork at the sidewalk level through lighting tubes or strips and add to a more inviting experience as one walks through. Now along 9th Street between M and N Streets is a 65-foot span of bare brick wall. The empty wall is an ideal location for an elevation sculpture or mural, as well as an opportunity to connect the convention center to the vibrant mural culture of the Shaw Historic District. And here is a rendering showing what a new wall mural may look like on this section of the building's 9th Street elevation. Similarly, the edge of the convention center along N Street is currently devoid of interest. This offers an opportunity for public art, for a public art piece such as a wall sculpture in the N Street plaza area adjacent to the new exterior stair to the rooftop terrace. And here is a rendering showing a new wall sculpture somewhat hidden behind the new street tree would look like, as well as the exterior stair to the rooftop terrace. Therefore, staff finds the introduction of the retail kiosk along 9th Street, the publicly accessible roof terrace, and the art installations will activate the site with uses that attract people and break up the monotonous buildings walls, building walls. Now we will discuss wayfinding around the convention center. The current wayfinding systems, system does not adequately assist pedestrians unfamiliar with the convention center's three-block area. The new wayfinding proposed consists of inserting at the six corners of the convention center with the most pedestrian traffic, new signs that provide orientation from far away through super graphics, from closer through directional signs to surrounding landmarks, and up close through a more detailed map showing amenities and retail around the area. The new wayfinding will complement the colors of the kiosk in reddish tones. Now I will introduce the fifth component, the proposed streetscape improvements. Here is a photograph to remind you of the existing streetscape conditions, and this is at the Mount Vernon Place entrance. The final plan proposes to remove some of the current paving found within the three blocks encompassing the convention center and replacing these areas of paving with a pattern that is meant to reference the waveforms of music and the musical history of the Shaw neighborhood. Since the concept review, the color of the new pavers is lighter and the pattern has been simplified, yet it retains the inspiration from music sound waves. The areas of new paving are concentrated around areas of high activity or to signify retail programs. And again, as I mentioned, the majority of the existing paving will remain. New above-grade planners will be installed around the streets of the convention center, including some with integrated seating. The planners will be still with folded edges and powder-coated finishes in a gray color, while the seating will consist of wood boards and stainless steel spacers. Most of the planners are two-tiered, with the lower tier being a height of 18 inches to the seat and the upper tier at 36 inches. New street trees will be planted along the streets around the convention center with a palette to include sycamores, willow oaks, honey and honey locusts. In the new planting beds, vegetation will be installed with a variety of flowers. Overall, the changes will improve the streetscape, and therefore, staff finds that the proposed streetscape improvements, excuse me, streetscape landscaping provides shade, softens the otherwise hardscape environment, and manages stormwater. Staff does note that any improvements in the public space will require a public space permit in coordination with the district's Department of Transportation's Office of Public Space. Staff will also recommend the development of minor design components, such as the planner's material colors should that change, and planting bed location and dimensions be delegated to staff for review and approval. And last, the last component of the final plan we will discuss is the lighting strategy, beginning with the convention center's entrance at Mount Vernon Place. Today, the pylons framing the Mount Vernon Place entrance are not light emitting and must be projected onto in order to light up at night. On this photograph, you will see the pylons outlined in red and indicated with an arrow. The dark green element is an insert into the pylon. The final plan proposes to replace the current pylon inserts with translucent glass and inserting it with LED strip lighting, which will allow for a multiple lighting effects. Staff would like to remind the commission that at the concept review, the potential impacts of the lighting plan was discussed. A thoughtful lighting plan was developed for the applicant's Carnegie Library Rehabilitation Project in Mount Vernon Square I mentioned earlier. The lighting plan approved by the commission in 2017 included the use of subtle white light to highlight the historic architectural details of the Carnegie Library. This rendering is of Carnegie Library's north elevation, which faces the convention center's Mount Vernon Place entrance. As the north elevation of the library is sighted in relatively close proximity to the convention center's Mount Vernon Place entrance, a distance of approximately 110 feet, any lighting changes proposed at this location should not diminish or negatively impact the thoughtful and sudden approach for lighting the Carnegie Library. Since the concept review, the applicant has provided a robust lighting Since the concept review, the applicant has provided a robust lighting plan for the Convention Center to address the comments of the Commission, the concept. Here are renderings of night views at Mount Vernon Place facing west. The image on the left is the existing condition, and the image on the right is following the installation of the new glass inserts in the pylons. For this image, based on the modeling, the new pylon lighting is shown at its highest intensity. In reviewing the thorough lighting plan provided by the applicant, staff has determined that there are no adverse effects, direct or indirect, to historic resources. The D.C. State Historic Preservation Officer concurred with the determination of no adverse effects to historic resources. The proposed lighting plan for the south side of the Convention Center fronting Mount Vernon Place relates to the thoughtful approach for lighting the Carnegie Library and does not negatively impact Mount Vernon Square or the library. Shifting to other components of the final lighting strategy, the new retail kiosk and projecting balconies will have linear LED strips to outline these features with color lighting. Red will be used on the kiosk and yellow along the balconies and roof terraces. The new roof terrace is proposed to have step lighting, garden up lighting, and floor mounted lights. Washington Globe street lamps will be used along the streets encompassing the Convention Center with additional lighting for the new wayfinding elements and street planters in the form of linear sidewalk down lighting. At the concept review, the Commission also requested information about potential visual impacts to the adjacent neighborhoods, as the Commission was concerned that the added light had the potential to impact the area, particularly the residential areas along Seventh Street. As part of the requested lighting study, the applicant has provided studies showing the existing lighting conditions and the lighting following the implementation of the new lighting, as shown here on N and Ninth Street. And here are renderings of the lighting before and after the project implementation from north of L Street, no, N Street. And finally, here are two renderings showing the lighting from the northeast corner of M and Seventh Streets. Once again, in reviewing the lighting study, staff finds the proposed lighting scheme for each side of the building, the stairs, the underpasses, and the pylons are at the entrance to the Convention Center better activates the building in the public realm and is compatible with the adjacent residential areas in the Shaw Historic District and Mount Vernon Square. Furthermore, staff finds the proposed lighting does not result in adverse effects, either direct or indirect, to historic resources, namely, Mount Vernon Square and the Shaw Historic District. Overall, the exterior alterations and streetscape improvements to the Walter E. Washington Convention Center reflect and respond to the dynamic changes that are occurring in this part of downtown Washington and will activate the desired pedestrian experience as envisioned by Events DC. Therefore, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approves Events DC's preliminary and final site and building plans for exterior alterations and streetscape improvements at the Walter E. Washington Convention Center and commends Events DC's vision for developing a project that activates the pedestrian experience around the three blocks that encompass the Convention Center. I've already covered the rest of the recommendations in my presentation, so I will conclude now. I would like to invite Ryan Conway of Events DC to address the Commission, and he is also accompanied by his design team, and we can all answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Ryan Conway. I'm a senior project manager with Events DC. As you all know, the official convention and sports authority of the District of Columbia. Certainly excited to be here today to seek final approval from the Commission of the plans Lee just went through. You may know the Convention Center is now over 16 years old, and while it has functioned exceptionally well to date, its heavy use, lack of pedestrian activity along the perimeter, and increased density and development in the surrounding area necessitates modernization of the public realm and building exterior. As you've seen, Events DC and our design team took a comprehensive approach to the project encompassing the lighting, the public artwork, retail kiosk interventions, the wayfinding signage, a new rooftop terrace amenity, planter boxes along the street, and the like. We feel that not only will these improvements provide added value to the Convention Center clients and their attendees, but the revitalization project will create a greater sense of place within the Shaw community, adding that energy that's been lacking, being more of an attraction to residents of the district, and further underlying the importance of the Convention Center as a key destination and critical building of the district. So, as Lee mentioned, I'm here to answer any questions. I have Susie Schmidt here with Bayer Blender Bell with me, and Yuval Zohar with OMA to answer any design-related questions. But thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Conway and Mr. Webb. Very nice presentation. I'd like to see if anyone has any comments or questions.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Dixon.
I just would like to say that I'm sure Walter would be very pleased with what you're doing around his building. I'm not sure how many knew him, I knew him pretty well, so I know he likes excitement and energy around anything he's involved in, so thank you for that. Having said that, there is a lot of roof space here, and I know you're talking about providing an upper deck utilization. How much of that will be covered with that space that you're laying out of the roof?
The square footage, I believe.
Percentage, more or less, about a half, a third?
It's only a small portion. I believe the capacity would be about 220 people, so it's just a small area just over the loading dock, so.
With all this electrical use, is there any thought about any, with all the flatness there, any solar utilization at some point, solar panels?
We have not considered that as part of this project.
Yeah, it seems to me that somebody ought to think about that for the future, because it would be a way of offsetting some of this cost, and it'd be sustainable, so you know the rules on that. Also, I was concerned about the, whether or not there could be some kind of, anything about connectivity between the Apple Building, I guess I could call it that, and the Convention Center, given the fact that there's a lot of traffic issues there, people, pedestrians crossing, and it's a real complicated area, traffic and pedestrians. So, has there been any thought about some kind of connectivity there?
Not a hard connection. Obviously, we feel that the improvements to the Convention Center will benefit what we're doing at.
It's going to encourage more pedestrian traffic, which is good.
It will. Current operations would be in place. We have, you know, we work with the district to have folks out there directing traffic during heavy events and highly-attended events, but nothing in the streets are improvements.
I think it's probably maybe unacceptable to a lot of folk, but some kind of, you know, overpay, I don't know, to reach, but maybe that's off the table. Let me leave that alone. Traffic is a big problem with the Marriott there. If you go down to any time of the day, you can just, you're backed up all the way around, people out in the street trying to fag, wavy on, so that would be something you can think about in the future, managing the traffic issue. And also in your signage, is there any effort to try to make it certainly more international, graphic and international, given the clientele that we service at the Convention Center?
Yuval, can you speak to that?
Some international signage, it may be a graphic issue rather than a literary, you know, like writing or words, but graphically at least.
Yeah, I know we're working through the details of the exact nomenclature on there, but essentially, it's not only to direct people in and around the building to specific parts of the Convention Center, but to direct people to Metro and direct people to other parts of the area.
Hi, I'm Yuval Zohar from OMA, the design team. To speak to that, we're currently in talks with a graphic designer and signage designer who, together with Events DC, will help us design the graphics towards whatever is needed in the area.
Yeah, I just think that the international kind of flavor would be useful. We've got visitors coming in and locals who, you know, help. Anyhow, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cash.
Is there any significance to, like, the color palette chosen? I mean, it seems like a lot of red going on there in an area that, right now, the context is this big gray and glass building, which is similar to the Marriott that we just built right next door to it. Is there any significance, or is it just kind of a design choice?
Largely driven by design. I think we wanted the retail, we wanted everything to tie together, so there's sort of a basic color scheme that sort of wraps everything in, the yellow and the red in the terrace, and then in the retail kiosks. I don't know if there's any significance beyond just, you know, trying to do something a little bit different and sort of break up the gray exterior of the building.
One of the concerns I have is actually that, I mean, right now, we have a lot of underutilization of a lot of the existing kiosks that are there, and I mean, it has kind of more of a palette where they can customize their own little stores, and I almost feel like if you're making everything the same, unless you're having 20 T-Mobile stores move in, it just, it could actually further limit the interest, because everything's going to look very standard. So, I think it's a bold choice, and it makes it a little bit more interesting, but I think that you have to be careful, because I think that there could be trade-offs, especially trying to attract more retail space when now we're a very new design aesthetic that might not mesh with something that someone wanted to move in there. So, it's just, it's something that has made me a little bit uneasy in looking at it. I mean, I think it looks pretty cool for the area, because it is kind of underutilized there, but I think that there's also some risk, so I'd urge you to be careful and maybe look at potential people that want to move in and see if they're okay with that or even the current tenant, so.
Yes, Commissioner Clarko.
I just had, I actually had a similar comment. I think it's wonderful having, I've been in the city in a long time, and I've also been down in that area many, many times, and it's, you know, the facades, everything's so stark, so it's so, it's wonderful to see the concepts that you're bringing to enliven both the streetscape as well as the structure itself. Just a comment on, I think, not that you haven't thought of it, but that it's, I think the wayfinding is always tricky, too, when you have, when you have, and I note in the CFA report, they said something reminding everyone to think about how those retail kiosks get set up, knowing that it might be difficult to find long-term clientele going into those spaces. So, it harkens back to your comment about that, how you coordinate the wayfinding with the fact that there might not be, might not be much permanency in the kiosk inhabitants, but also, maybe there would be a way to reflect on your comments about enlivening that space and making it more customizable, so that it could be, to your comment, so that it, you know, so that it would allow a tenant, whether they be short-term or long-term, to customize the space without interrupting the integration you're trying to show. That might be difficult.
Yeah, the spaces are, but that's, no, well noted. I think the spaces are rather small, and I think it does provide opportunity for smaller businesses, so we view that, but certainly, that's on our radar, and, you know, we'll make sure that we lease them. I think we've done a good job over the last couple of years of leasing up the retail space in the building, so we would look to do the same thing here. I think on the smaller kiosk side, there's some flexibility for different configurations.
Thank you.
Mr. Trublind.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I think this is, I echo a lot of what has been said. I think this is a great improvement on what can be done on the Convention Center around this neighborhood and can really enliven it. I just want to continue along the line of questioning around these kiosks, because I think they're interesting, and it's certainly a very inventive way of kind of creating more space, but I'm not sure what analog we should be thinking about for these, because it's not a, you had mentioned the other retail space, which thank you all for leasing up and putting to use. I think that only took a decade or so, but I think that these could be very interesting, and I actually am excited by it, but I don't know what mental model I should be having for who is going to, who's going to be in these spaces. You talk about pop-ups, but are they going to be, are they going to be, and lease lengths is a question. You know, it doesn't seem like there's much tenant build-out, there's no commercial kitchen, so, you know, there's four spaces here, and however many, was it three or two on the other one, three? Yeah, so I'm just interested to hear, what should we be thinking about who will be in these spaces?
Yeah, good points. You know, we have given that a lot of thought. Obviously, they'll be tenant-specific once we get to that time, but at least our initial vision at the outset is, you know, some of the smaller kiosks could be a shoe shine, it could be, you know, a potential, you know, newspaper stand, you know, food truck size type installation. On the larger ones, obviously, there'll be countertops and seating, so a barista-style, you know, food and beverage component. That's the goal right now, and that's how we're approaching it. So, we'll obviously, you know, look to engage a commercial real estate company to help advise on that and help us secure tenants once we get to that point.
Great, and I guess my only point is, you know, this is the exact type of retail that I think small businesses, you know, local businesses might be interested in as kind of a stepping stone to potential larger spaces. So, I really would encourage you to work with the district, local, small and local business development, and the Deputy Mayor's Office in that.
Yes, we'll do. Commissioner Wright.
I have a couple of, I just was checking to see if you were in the shipstead loose area, which you're not. Retail for GSA buildings has been, has suffered from the constraints on signage and lighting and all that stuff. It's hard. You don't have that. What I worry about is in an effort to make these retail kiosks successful, that it's going to get tacky in a hurry. So, I would just urge some restraint with the, what?
That's a good word.
Familiar word for me. Because the other side of the street on, oh, God, now I'm going to have a meltdown, Seventh, is new, right? It's just completed, and I think it can take a lot of color. What I'm, I don't, the red doesn't put me off. I think it's really successful inside, because the inside of the Convention Center is a little numbing also. So, I would just urge a little bit of thoughtful restraint, and especially when it comes to looking ahead to what we're going to hear about later with the change of all the bulbs to LED, and this, you know, I-95 lighting that we're going to have all over the city. It could get to be too much really quickly. So, I get it, you're going to have to, you're going to have to sort of thread the needle between what the retail's going to demand to get attention and what the streetscape deserves in terms of restraint and respect. And the other thing that I, I don't know if anyone else doesn't, this N Street elevation bugs me. I get what you're trying to do, and it's not like the others, but it feels a little bit too disparate. So, it draws attention to itself, and you want that to get people up on the roof and all of that, but the palette shift doesn't seem to have a logic to it, other than to just signal, well, something different is going on here. And I'm not sure that it's successful yet, and I guess you're at final design, so there's, everybody else thinks it is. I don't, I would have another look at it to see if it could stand apart and yet seem to have something to do with the other elevations still, and I don't think public art can do that for you.
Can I add to that, just a comment?
You're the chairman.
Well, I know, but I'm on top of your comment, and I think part of the challenge is that, in my mind, Ninth Street is the more active street, and we're now on N here, so how many people will know this is here? How many people will find it? How will you find it? And then I'm also interested in, I actually like, I actually like this design, okay? I like the color pop, yellow, it's a different color. I like the color pop yellow, it's a different color, you know, but I think the challenge is, is drawing people to it from three blocks away or whatever. So certainly any, anything that will bring that attention, but having this stairway on N as opposed to Ninth, and I'm sure we don't have room on Ninth, which is why we're on N, but I hope this is a very successful intervention on the rooftop. I want to ask a little bit about security. I understand maybe this will be closed, that's open during certain hours and so forth, but how will the security work here? Just curious.
That's a very good question. We actually have had our security personnel reviewing this and developing a plan to be in place once it's open. Obviously, you have the stairs that come down into the public space, so there will have to be some mechanism of blocking those off and making sure that, that people aren't up there when there's not, you know, people, convention center folks up there or, or the like. But we're, we're in discussions about how to specifically operate that, but it's certainly on our, our operational to-do list to figure out exactly how to secure it and to make sure that it has eyes on it, as the rest of the convention center does.
Is it seen as a public space or as an event space or both or?
I think it's a combination of both. We want to maximize the use of it, so we would look to, you know, use it for groups coming to the convention center, but also have some, some access to it when there's not things going on up there. Should be a pretty good, cool space. So again, you know, the goal would be to maximize its use through a number of different avenues.
Any other comments? I have one last one, but anybody else comments, questions? I just want to tell you, we're looking forward to seeing you back again when you're here to talk about the metro entrance. That was one area that I was particularly vocal about a year ago. I was looking forward to an answer. Obviously, we were not there yet, so I understand that, but this could be another important resolution to a very dark and kind of uninviting corner, and again, on N Street. So how to, no, I guess that's on M, I guess, the metro. Anyway.
Yes.
We need to, we need to welcome people to this place in a very open arms kind of way, and hopefully you'll, you'll come back with some inspiration for all of us.
We'll be back.
Okay, sensing no further comments or questions. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final site and building plans?
Uh-oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the open session is Agenda Item 6C, Approval of Comments on Concept Design of the U.S. Park Police Stables Submitted by the National Park Service. We had a very nice field trip there today. It was great that we ordered good weather for that, and thank you, and got to see the cherry blossoms also. So Ms. Lee will make this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, members of the commission. The National Park Service, in collaboration with the Trust for the National Mall, has submitted a concept design for the U.S. Park Police replacement and site improvements. The purpose of the U.S. Park Police horse-mounted unit on the National Mall is to control crowds at large-scale and First Amendment events, respond to spontaneous demonstrations, provide security during White House emergencies, helicopter landings of the President and other heads of state, and supplement law enforcement. The three-acre site is located within Ash Woods, south of the Lincoln Memorial Reflecting Pool. The site is bound by Ash Road and the JFK Hockey Fields to the north, the D.C. War Memorial to the east, Independence Avenue to the south, and the Korean War Memorial to the west. Here is a view from the Washington Monument looking west to the World War II Memorial, the Reflecting Pool, and the Lincoln Memorial. You can see Constitution Gardens to the right and Ash Woods to the left. The stables are not visible due to their modest scale and surrounding vegetation. The green line shows the existing pedestrian circulation around the site. Ash Road runs parallel to the Reflecting Pool and provides pedestrian access between memorials, recreation areas, and the stables. It also serves as a service road for emergency, maintenance, and park police. Another way to access the stables is through a social path that runs perpendicular through Ash Woods from Independence Avenue and connects the MLK Memorial. The stables were constructed in 1975 as temporary structures to house park police horses during the U.S. bicentennial celebrations, but they remain in use today. Most people do not know that the stables exist because the facility is surrounded by a six-foot-tall solid fence. The facility consists of small detached structures oriented of access from Ash Road, rotated approximately 13 degrees to the northwest. The facility is approximately 5,000 square feet and houses 10 horses. It consists of a paddock where horses exercise, four detached wood frame structure, and an office trailer. Adjacent to the stables is a water treatment plant that serves the Lincoln Memorial Reflecting Pool, shown here in red. The water plant follows the stable alignment and was approved by the commission in 2010. The site constraints include buffers around the perimeter of the site and the water treatment plant and underground facilities running to the Reflecting Pool. So Ash Woods consists of informal growth of trees. There are 115 trees within the study area, including a mixture of the seediest and evergreen trees. Here are images of existing conditions. As you experienced today during the site visit, the facility no longer meets the needs of the police or the horses. Low ceiling stalls offer minimal protection from the elements. Parking is informal and highly visible from Ash Road. The existing office trailer is inadequate, and the perimeter fence is near the end of its useful life. The design principles are listed on this slide. I'm not going to review them in detail, but to summarize, the intent of the principles is to respect the cultural and historic context, minimizing impervious surface, improve circulation, make the paddocks part of the visitor experience, and provide educational access. STAFF supports the project and the National Park Service efforts to partner with the Trust for the National Mall to replace the existing park police stables with a facility that enhances the visitor experience, improves overall function, and is sensitively designed with the context of the National Mall. So here is a bubble diagram describing the program. The proposed 13,542-square-foot facility will accommodate 14-horse stalls. The key elements include stable space, outdoor paddocks for public training and medical purposes, educational, administrative, and support spaces. The project will also include landscape improvements and security fencing. The project is consistent with the 2010 National Mall Plan, which identified several improvements located within Ash Woods, including rebuilding the park police stables and encouraging the stables and paddocks to become a public attraction with educational opportunities. The National Mall consists of a hierarchy of elements, including large-scale national memorials and monuments formally organized around the mall, panels, and the Reflecting Pool, and smaller support facilities organized less formally. The hierarchy of these elements is reflected in their scale, massing, materials, and orientation. The park police stables currently serve as a support facility at the lower end of this hierarchy. The orientation, massing, and design of the tables can help to elevate its prominence as a public attraction. However, it should still appear secondary to the monuments and memorials on the National Mall. Here you can see the building design evolution. Providing adequate natural ventilation and fresh air to the horses are key design considerations for stables. As a result of consultation with NCPC, CFA, and the D.C. State Historic Preservation Office, the design team reduced the height of the stables from approximately 31 to 24 feet to achieve natural ventilation while respecting the prominence of the adjacent D.C. War Memorial. Here is a typical stall section. The main components are high ceilings for maximum natural ventilation, cupolas with louvers for ventilation, which are about eight feet tall, skylights, photovoltaic panels on the south-facing facade, and masonry walls for durability and rolling control. The applicant has provided four alternatives, which differ in orientation and design. The common elements among the alternatives include removing 56 trees and adding between 72 to 87 new trees, locating parking and loading in the back of the building accessed by Independence Avenue, not only for the stables but also for the water treatment plant, providing an emergency egress on supported grass along Ash Road, and formalizing the adjacent social path. Here you can see Alternative 1 and 2 side by side. Alternative 1 and 2 orient the stables parallel to Ash Road and the Reflecting Pool. Here is a closer look. Alternative 1 is symmetrical, while Alternative 2 has an asymmetrical composition. They include two public paddocks. STAFF finds that, given the scale of the proposed table building at approximately 200 feet in length, it should have a more formal orientation parallel to Ash Road and the Reflecting Pool to respond to the surrounding context. Therefore, STAFF comments favorably on the orientation of Alternative 1 and 2 because it helps to reinforce the spatial definition of the National Mall. Here you can see Alternatives 3 and 4 side by side. Alternative 3 and 4 rotate the asymmetrical building of access from Ash Road to follow the original stable's orientation and water treatment plant angle. Here is a closer look at Alternatives 3 and 4. They include a single paddock. Due to the building orientation, the alternatives require increased turning radius for vehicles, which increases impervious areas. Alternative 4 detaches the public educational space, which you can see in here, from the stables into a separate pavilion and generates the greatest amount of impervious area. STAFF finds Alternative 3 and 4 should be dismissed because they follow the original orientation of the stables, rotated approximately 13 degrees away from Ash Road and the Reflecting Pool, and do not respond to the surrounding context. So moving on to STAFF analysis, STAFF will provide the following comments regarding Alternative 1 and 2 organized by impacts to the National Mall character, environment, and visitor experience. Alternative 1 proposes a traditional stable with asymmetrical composition and a building orientation parallel to Ash Road and the Reflecting Pool. Alternative 1 locates the public entrance and educational space in the center of the building. It includes two public paddocks with viewing areas. As we learned this morning, the use of paddocks depends on the temperament of the horses and the ability to get along with each other. A maximum of two horses use a paddock at any given time. Therefore, two public paddocks will allow more horses to go out at the same time and maximize public viewing areas. Here you can see in red the demolition plan on top of the proposed plan. Alternative 1 results in a slight increase in impervious areas when compared to existing conditions. It results in more impervious areas than Alternative 2 and adds 72 trees. As you can see in the north elevation, Alternative 1 includes a continuous pitched roof with five cupolas for ventilation. The program includes an educational component within the building facing the National Mall. Educational space is connected to horse areas. Visitors will be able to see the horses while they are being groomed. The horse stalls are distributed across the building. The offices and support spaces are located in the back. Here is an elevation comparing the height of the proposed stables with the adjacent D.C. War Memorial. Stables will be located 320 feet away from the memorial. The height of the stables is consistent across all the alternatives. The stables will be 23 feet lower than the D.C. War Memorial. STAFF finds that the symmetrical layout is efficient, elegant, and has a strong identity as a stable. However, the continuous roofline and cupolas make the building more visually prominent on the National Mall when compared to Alternative 2. Here is an elevation from Ash Road and from the D.C. War Memorial. So Alternative 2 proposes a contemporary stable with an asymmetrical composition and a building orientation parallel to Ash Road and the Reflecting Pool. It also includes two public paddocks with viewing areas. The public entrance and educational space will be shifted slightly to the east of the building along Ash Road. Here you can see in red the demolition plan on top of the proposed plan. Alternative 2 provides a compact and efficient layout that generates the least amount of impervious area as compared to the other alternatives, and it adds 76 new trees. The educational component will face the National Mall and will be connected to the horse tack room similar to Alternative 2. Alternative 2 consolidates the horse stalls into the west portion of the building. STAFF finds that the asymmetrical design maintains the secondary character of the stables within the hierarchy of elements on the National Mall. The segmented roofline breaks the massing, provides opportunities for green roofs, minimizes the use of cupolas, and mimics the existing detached table's composition. Here is the north elevation of Alternative 2 in relationship with the D.C. War Memorial. Stables will be located 335 feet away from the memorial. The proposed massing scale and height of the stables is compatible with the setting of the National Mall. The fence typology is consistent among all the alternatives. It includes four fence types: a double paddock fence, a solid fence located at the back of the facility to screen private operations, and two vehicular gates. Here is an enlarged section of the double fence around the public paddocks. The wood post fence will be positioned eight feet apart to prevent people from feeding the horses. A five-foot-tall fence will face the horses, and a four-foot fence will face the public. In terms of building materials, the applicant has provided three options that emphasize the building horizontality but differ in color and texture. Option 1 consists of coarse fieldstone base and fiber cement rainscreen in the middle. STAFF comments favorably on Option 1 because these materials reflect the stable's function, are compatible with the context, and evoke the original materials of the stables. STAFF recommends that the applicant make the materials of the public educational space more transparent and welcoming. Here you can see some examples of stone cladding structures in the National Mall that are compatible with Option 1. Option 2 has a brick base instead of stone. And Option 3 uses a monochromatic gray palette consisting of granite base with fiber cement rainscreen. STAFF finds that the materials proposed for Options 2 and 3 are not compatible with the National Mall materials. In particular, Option 3's color palette emphasizes the building's mass and does not reflect the stable's function. The stables are located within the view shed of the Lincoln Memorial and other resources of the National Mall. Therefore, STAFF requests eye-level simulations and renderings to better understand the visual impact of the proposed stables. In particular, views along Ash Road looking east toward the Washington Monument and west towards the Lincoln Memorial, views from the D.C. War Memorial looking west, and from the hockey fields looking south, and views from Independence Avenue near the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial looking north. Finally, STAFF requests that the applicant provide a landscape plan and a lighting plan as part of the preliminary review submission in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Finally, NPS is preparing an environmental assessment and conducting Section 106 consultation for the project. NCPC will participate as a cooperating agency in the NEPA process and as consulting party in the Section 106 process. NPS is seeking public comments to identify any issues or concerns to be considered in the EA and the Section 106 processes. The 30-day public comment period started on April 1 until May 1, 2019, and there will be a Section 106 consulting parties meeting and a public scoping meeting. More information can be found at the National Park Service planning More information can be found at the National Park Service Planning, Environment, and Public Comment website. To conclude, the executive director's recommendation is for the commission to comment favorably on the orientation of Alternative 1 and 2 because the orientation helps to reinforce the spatial definition of the National Mall, comment favorably on building materials Option 1, which consists of coarse field stone based and fiber cement rain screen because these materials reflect the stable's function, are compatible with the context, and evoke the original materials of the stable, recommend that the applicant make the materials of the public educational space more transparent and welcoming, request additional views, a landscape, and a lighting plan. With this, I conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant and design team are available as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. Open up for any questions or comments. The commission. Really?
Thank you, Commissioner Argo.
Just to fill the void. I thought, I loved being able to see this facility and really appreciate the staff organizing a field trip out there for those of us, especially who've been, I mean, I've been in the district almost 40 years, and I can't tell you how many times I've been on the Mall, and I had no idea that this facility was there. The folks that took us around and showed us that park, police folks, were really helpful, and it was really helpful to understand, well, to see particularly the condition and the need for this, for this, you know, for these new buildings, and to see the wear and tear that's gone on in those facilities out there, to see the beautiful animals, and how it was just, I mean, it was just an all-around good experience. I think, I really appreciate the work that the staff has done on this. I think I would agree with the staff recommendations in general in terms of the particular, of the options for orientation of the facility as well as the materials, and I just hope that y'all can get this done pretty fast because you really need some, you really need some new space, and the animals need new space and bigger, bigger space to do, you know, to be, I think, you know, to be at their best in supporting the work that you do.
Mr. Joe?
Mr. Dixon.
I would like to apologize for not being there today. I knew it was there.
You were ahead of me.
I couldn't get there today. I have a question. What about this education facility, maybe off record, or I'd like to know, how do you program that so folks can come in and be a part of that education experience? Can someone tell me that now?
They should come up and talk about that.
Anyone, representatives from the NPS, talk about the...
So, I mean, I can, I can start the conversation, but, oh, here we go. Sean's gonna step up. Good.
Hello again.
I was gonna call on him anyway.
Introduce yourself again, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Keneely, Chief of Professional Services at the National Mall and Memorial Parks. The purpose of the education area is to provide awareness to our visitors that are in that area. There's a lot of visitors that go between the Lincoln Memorial and the World War II Memorial, and they just kind of come upon the Horseman Patrol stables there. But we want to add an educational component where it'll be pretty much self-directed. There'll be an area where the visitors can go inside, get out of the weather. There'll be a small restroom that they could use if they wish to do that. But there'll be, you know, just general information about the United States Park Police, Horseman Patrol, and the National Park Service. Very simple, but...
Walk-in, walk-in, something where a school could schedule time?
Sure, certainly. Tours could go through there, groups, small groups, large groups. It's mostly self-directed. We're not gonna post a ranger there, but, you know, we'll have rangers floating through that area to ask, you know, answer questions, but it'll be mostly self-directed.
The Park Service to have these tours if someone wanted to set up a program?
Pardon me?
They approach the Park Service if they want to have a tour or set up a program.
Some of those details need to be worked out. We're gonna work with our United States Park Police, those folks, they're there every day.
That's a work in progress.
Yeah, we'll work all that out, but the officers there do provide information to our visitors now, but this is an opportunity to even provide more information about the Horseman Patrol.
So, I would point out that it was noted this morning that there are tours that happen occasionally now that people contact the park police to, for school groups to come down and do tours.
Organized, that you call on 20.
We want to be able to do more of that. I mean, it was part of the purpose of this in the Mall Plan to, since the facility is there, to not just make it sort of this anomalous thing that people, you know, look at and kind of scratch their heads, but actually acknowledge they are there and why they are there and what they do, and it's a great opportunity.
Understand the value of animals and law enforcement and, you know, the horses, the dogs, and because there'll be a couple of times, you'll see robots running around doing these things. How do you use a horse?
Self-driving robots.
Okay, Commissioner Wright, please.
I can't help myself. So, I know that, so we have an education center so people can see the animals and learn about them. That's important. But I really would, I think the horses are well-cared-for and loved by their companion humans, clearly, but I would really urge that you rethink the two public paddocks and because the horses live a really public life. They're interacting with the public all the time, and they've got to be stressed. And one little, little private paddock to hang out for an hour is not enough for an animal's well-being, and I'm totally serious about this. Think of what they go through every day, well-meaning, wonderful people who want to pat them and are fascinated with them, and however well their riders care for them, they need some time away from people. And I would urge you to think, rethink your program a little bit to be thinking about the health and well-being even more than you already are of the animals because they deserve a respite. I talked to one of the park police ladies who was cleaning her tack in the tack room, and she has a thoroughbred, and she said her horse just needs some, to decompress. And I, I think that some thought in the program to allow for that. I get they don't get to go on summer vacation, you know, to wherever for a month's R and R, but, but I think they could be provided for in a careful way. And I don't have any comments about the building. I think the building designs are all pretty good. The first one, I think I like the asymmetrical one a little bit better, but I think they're all fine.
May?
You wanna talk horses?
No. I do want to point out, though, if that's not clear to folks, that, I mean, there's a dual fence, so we won't have people going right up to the horses.
No, I understand, but I mean, there's a private paddock.
I'm sure you caught that.
Yes, I did.
But I want to make sure everybody else understood that we're not gonna have the, you know, hordes of people who are in the Mall coming down and trying to pat the horses. So, yeah, I mean, I think we understand that concern. We'll consider what that means or what it could mean to make sure that the horses have...
Maybe there's two private paddocks and one public. That's all I'm saying. Just think about where they, how much time they spend in stressful situations for them.
Society, rest time for horses. People yelling at them.
Right. And not just in their stall. I think your point's a good one.
Thank you.
Could we be a little clear about the fencing? Because I did catch it, I didn't read it so much in the document, but, but you did mention it, Ms. Lee, how that's gonna work? So, the question is, there's an outside fence that the, that the humans will be fenced out of, and then there's an inside fence that the horses will be fenced in. And I guess, is that the blue versus the red is that we're looking at?
Yes, so the blue fence is the outside paddock fence, which will be four feet tall, and then the dash circular orange fence will be the inner fence, and it'll be five feet tall, and they're both wood fence, so it will be visible. You can see the section here, and then they will be positioned eight feet in between. That way, people cannot feed them or touch them. They can see them.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I just have, any other comments? Commissioner Cash?
Just to talk a little bit more about the impervious surfaces, one of the things I thought was strange out there today, that the access road back there is actually like a road. I was having to, there were people having to move aside just for all of the cars that were going back and forth. So, I see in the EDR that it talks a lot about separating that use, and I think that having an entrance off Independence is a great way to do that, but it did mention that it's still gonna, can serve as a service road. So, kind of two questions. First, is the asphalt that's still there gonna be ripped out, maybe put something like gravel or something that reflects that it's not used as much? And also, when we're talking service road, are we gonna have some of the loading and delivery stuff still go over Ash Road, or is all of that planned to come in off Independence and we're really just talking an emergency service road if a police car needs to zip down there or something?
I think we've always discussed it as becoming more of an emergency service road, and I'm not sure what we're thinking yet about what the surface will be. I think we only recently talked about a complete replacement of that road along that entire stretch, and I don't think we've gotten to the point of figuring out exactly what that would be. Sean, do you have anything that, you've been thinking about it more than I have?
So, this project is really, the park service is able to do this through the trust from the National Mall. There are a partner that is actually raising all the funds to do this project. The park service just really didn't have the funding to do this project, but what the park service is contributing to this project is we're looking into a project to rehabilitate Ash Road. So, when the project is completed, the main access to, to the stables is off of Independence Avenue, and that's for United States Park Police operations and maintenance operations. So, 99% of the, of the traffic will be off Independence Avenue. We do want to retain Ash Road so that if there's emergencies that the United States Park Police need to react to, they can use that route. But that, that Ash Road will become primarily a pedestrian sidewalk essentially. So, we are looking into options now on how to treat that. So, it needs to be rehabilitated. We have issues with the asphalt, the drainage, but it will go back with a surface that is sympathetic to adjacent sidewalks in that area.
Excellent. I was just gonna say, I think that looking at other parts of the Mall where you have just crushed stone or something like that might be a little bit more compatible, and I think that the current asphalt, I mean, on either side of it, there's just a pit of mud, and I don't think that it necessarily reflects that well on the D.C. War Memorial there either because that's kind of the back entrance to it, and it's just black asphalt.
More than likely, what we're looking towards is a sidewalk similar to the sidewalks that are on either side of the Lincoln reflecting pool.
Yeah, it seems up to now that Ash Road has been the primary entrance and needed to carry heavy vehicles, including horses and trailers, I would imagine, so the ruts and all those things. But if that's gonna be really only a minor secondary entrance, seems like there's an opportunity to make something else more...
Yeah. I think the objective is to make it more path-like. I would point out that the gravel paths are a challenge from a maintenance and accessibility point of view, so we're probably not gonna be doing something like that, but we'll be looking at something that is more like the other paths on the Mall. We're eventually gonna have to address that issue in the rest of the Mall, if only for accessibility reasons.
Any other comments? I just have a comment about the alternatives and the options. I am drawn to option, Alternative 2, actually, which is more of the asymmetrical version, and my reason is that I like, I could live with Alternative 1, but the Alternative 1 seems to make it more about the building and the kind of presence of a wall that's demonstrated through that building. And what I love about this setting, and the reason most of us didn't even know it was really there, is because it sits so quietly in the space. It really disappears. You don't see it from either side, really, unless you're right up on it, either from Independence Avenue or from the Mall. And so, it would seem like even though the building's gonna be, have a little higher profile, now up to 24 feet, the more we can do to have it sit quietly in this space will, I think, make it a more successful and natural setting. So, that's my input there. And then on the facade materials, I agree with staff. I think Option 1 seems to be a more natural feel, feels more like what that environment might want to, to feel like. So, that's the input. And then on the tour, and again, I also want to echo, thank you very much for the very informative and interesting tour, that I would like to see more elevations from the Independence Avenue side here because that's a very prominent facade elevation as seen from now, more and more people coming from Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial, and so, as we see this next time, we'd love to see that developed as well. Any other comments? Quick, Mr. May?
If we're getting close to the closing, I just wanted to beg the chairman's indulgence for a second and recognize the park police chief, Rob McLean, in the audience, and ask him to come to the microphone to make it worth his trip down here because he's been sitting here patiently for a couple hours, and I just want him to see if he would like to say hello to the commission and comment at all about the project.
Thank you to the commission for joining us today at our H1 stables. I couldn't be more proud of what we do on the National Mall, and a critical aspect of that mission is our Horseman Patrol officers. They dedicate both of their lives to partner with an animal that makes our presence more inviting compared to our officers on the ground, and they get the visitors to approach them, to engage them in conversation, and in contemporary policing, that's what we have to be to our visitors and to our community. I'm a history major by education, and when I think about Pierre-Lent Font in 1791, the same year that the U.S. Park Police was established, and his vision of our nation's capital, carriage houses, footpaths, members of our communities walking through the downtown, excuse me, National Mall area, and it invokes that, that history, that heritage of our nation, of our democracy, and our organization. So, I can be more proud of this group, of our organization, the National Park Service, and what it means to be that steward of our resource. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the commission, we really appreciate you coming today and your hospitality with your, you and your team. I think we all could learn more about what you do and certainly make the Mall feel like a park, which is what the country really looks to, and so, thank you and for your service.
Tour number one.
All right. Sensing no more, oh, pardon me, Commissioner White?
I just, in listening, I just wanted to mention that I kind of concur with the Commission on Fine Arts. I like this symmetrical building because it does connote that it's a stable, and so, I really appreciate your comments as well about the animals and what their needs are. So, I think either one of them work architecturally, but I think the symbolism of it really looking like a staple to celebrate the history is something we should think about and what works best for the function.
Okay. Thank you. Sensing no other comments or questions, I'd like to ask if there's a motion to approve the comments on the concept design.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. The last item on the open session is Agenda Item 6D, Approval of Preliminary and Final Site Development Plans for the Rock Creek Park Trail Access and Safety Improvements Submitted by the National Park Service, and Mr. Gorbich will give us a presentation on that.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The National Park Service has submitted preliminary and final site development plans for Rock Creek Park Trail
for Rock Creek Park Trail Access and Safety Improvements in Washington, D.C. As you may recall, NCPC reviewed the project as a concept design in July 2018. The commission generally commented favorably on the project at that time, but provided some additional comments that I'll discuss as I walk through the revised submission. The extent of the improvements to Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway and Rock Creek Park Trail are shown here in green, and as can be seen, are generally comprised of two main sections. The first area of work, circled here in blue, includes improvements to segments of both the Parkway and the trail that span from Virginia Avenue to Ohio Drive along the Potomac River. Major work includes the rehabilitation of the Parkway, including asphalt mill and overlay and replacement of light poles and luminaries. While staff supports these projects, general maintenance work and replacement in kind is outside of the purview of the commission and will not be described in detail. Other work in this area, however, comprises the bulk of the access and safety improvements along the trail, which will be the focus of the presentation today. The second area of work is highlighted here in orange and includes resurfacing of Rock Creek Park Trail from the John Erickson National Memorial down to the Title Basin Bridge. As with the concept design, the project components that are pertinent to the commission can be broken into four categories. The first component is the widening and resurfacing of Rock Creek Park Trail, the extent of which is shown on this map in orange. Trail widths currently range from eight feet to 10 feet along its length. The northern trail segment will be widened to 14 feet in most locations, with a minimum width of 10 feet in areas constrained by important trees or other landscape features. The southern segment will be resurfaced, but will remain at nine feet in width. Porous asphalt pavement will be used in select locations to meet stormwater requirements and to reduce runoff into the adjacent Potomac River. This component of the project has not changed since the previous review and will not be further discussed. Instead, the focus of the remainder of the presentation will be on the following three components. Those include the redesign of the Belvedere at the old Constitution Avenue Northwest Turnaround, which is marked here with a blue circle. The construction of a tunnel for the Rock Creek Park Trail under the Theodore Roosevelt Memorial Bridge, which is marked here with a green circle. And trail improvements along the Potomac Waterfront near the John F. Kennedy Center. Again, the changes in this revised submission relate specifically to elements two through four, so I'll walk through those now. The first component I'd like to review is the redesign of the Belvedere. So the Belvedere originally served as a turnaround for Constitution Avenue at its western terminus. The construction of Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway separated the terminus from the main roadway, and while the asphalt turnaround still exists, it has not served a vehicular traffic function since that time. Because of the asphalt turnaround, as well as the convergence of several roadways in this location, navigation is a challenge for trail users. The applicant is proposing a redesign of the Belvedere area that will remove the turnaround, enhance landscaping, and redirect vehicular traffic to simplify bike and pedestrian connectivity and to improve safety for trail users. Further, it's important to note that this site was identified as a prime candidate site for a future memorial in the NCPC Memorials and Museums Master Plan because of its prominent location at the end of the National Mall adjacent to the Potomac River. The proposed redesign will also create a park-like setting that is more appropriate for commemoration and contemplation, consistent with this potential future use of the site. The major planned improvements to the Belvedere are shown here, with the existing site conditions on the left and the revised site plans on the right. The red line shows the existing and proposed circulation patterns. As can be seen here, the intersection would be reconfigured to allow the trail to move around the east side of the Belvedere site, where a new crosswalk would be constructed. The area shown in yellow would become a planting bed, and the area that is green would be landscaped with a green lawn. As a condition of a finding of no adverse effect to historic properties from the D.C. State Historic Preservation Office, the applicant is retaining the original curb lines within the landscape, which reflects its historic use as a vehicular turnaround. These are shown with the black lines on the right. The proposed site design and landscaping is largely similar to the concept design, with the exception of a couple components. First, the circle at the center, which was originally intended to be planted with vegetation, will instead be a green lawn, consistent with the rest of the area highlighted in green. Second, in this revised submission, the planting bed has been extended from the original curb line out towards the roadway, as highlighted here with the blue circle. Both of these landscaping changes are intended to reestablish a connection between the Belvedere and the larger context of the Constitution Avenue corridor. To further make this connection across the corridor, the applicant has revised its tree plan in this location. As can be seen here, while the concept design proposed retaining the existing trees only, as shown with the solid green circles, the modified design now proposes four additional trees to relate to the trees that line Constitution Avenue and to better define the terminus of the corridor. The images here show a comparison between the existing and proposed conditions, as can be seen from the northwest along Theodore Roosevelt Memorial Bridge. And these images provide a view southward from Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway. Overall, staff supports the revised designs for the Belvedere, which will greatly improve safety and navigation for pedestrians and bicycles, while creating a more appropriate site for a potential future memorial. The next component I'd like to discuss is the construction of the new trail tunnel through the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge abutment just north of the Belvedere. As can be seen in this image, the trail in this location currently shares a vehicular tunnel with the Parkway, where it narrows to six feet in width. This is well below safety standards and has a high potential for bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicle conflict. This project proposes the construction of a new 14-foot-wide dedicated trail tunnel that would pass through the hollow bridge abutment. While the concept design included options for both the alignment of the trail and design of the tunnel entry, the applicant has selected preferred options for these elements. I first want to review the selected alignment, which can be most easily seen from this view facing south along the trail. This image shows the current trail condition at this location, including the existing trail alignment into the shared vehicular tunnel on the left. This slide shows the options presented in the concept design, along with the selected design and the revised plans. As can be seen to the left, the applicant considered an option that was centered on the abutment but required a significant curve, and another option that was off-center but provided clear sightlines through the tunnel. In its review of the project, the commission expressed support for the direct alignment option, noting that the curved option would reduce visibility to and through the tunnel and compose a safety concern. Consistent with commission comments, the applicant has selected the direct alignment, which staff believes would enhance safety for trail users. I'd next like to review the tunnel entry design options, as they would look from the south end of the bridge near the Belvedere. As you may recall, the applicant had initially considered two potential designs for the tunnel entry, both of which can be seen on the left. The first was an arched entry, which included stone detailing, and the second was a simple rectangular entry. The commission supported the arched entry in its review, which was described as more architecturally interesting and consistent with the arched vehicular entry and arch spans crossing the river. However, in its review of the project, the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts expressed support for the rectangular option. In the revised design, the applicant has selected the rectangular tunnel entry as its preferred option, but staff finds that the revised design largely responds to concerns raised in the concept review. Specifically, the applicant has refined the details of the rectangular entry to include a chamfered opening with aligned joints, which staff finds is more consistent with the existing bridge design than the earlier iteration of the rectangular entry, specifically as it relates to the architectural details of the adjacent vehicular tunnel. The next component I'd like to discuss is the portion of the trail along the Kennedy Center waterfront, which is shown here with the purple line. The trail is currently 10 feet wide in this location, but seating areas and benches constrain the functional width to about six feet. Improvements include widening of the trail to 14 feet, resurfacing with porous asphalt, and removal and replacement of existing benches, which I'll show in a moment. Thirteen trees would be removed and replaced as a result of the project, all of which are in poor health or would be directly impacted by the construction. Here you can see a comparison of the existing and proposed conditions, which shows the trail modifications and associated tree impacts. In the image on the left, you can see several mature trees that would be replaced with smaller trees on the right. As noted, many of these are in poor condition, though others must be removed to accommodate the trail widening. All 13 trees removed as a result of the project would be replaced at a one-to-one ratio with two- to 2.5-inch caliber trees. Because of the width of some of the mature trees that would be lost, however, the project would result in a net loss of tree canopy. The MPS has noted that the trail constitutes a cultural landscape, and as such, any additional trees on the project site could impact its historic integrity. Staff notes this constraint and finds that the one-to-one tree replacement strategy effectively balances preservation of the historic landscape with natural resource considerations. Staff further notes that the overall loss of tree canopy will be reduced over time as these trees mature. On a final note, the commission requested additional information about wayfinding signage proposed as part of the project and review of the concept design. The applicant has submitted a map of proposed locations, as well as sample sign modifications, which can be seen here. The project will include new signage at 15 locations throughout the trail vicinity, which will help improve navigation for cyclists and pedestrians. As an example, a proposed modification to an existing sign at location 11 is highlighted here, which would indicate the direction of the Kennedy Center. Staff finds that this wayfinding signage would improve bike and pedestrian navigation throughout the project area.
Maps list, Thursday, April 4.
In conclusion, it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission approves the preliminary and final site development plans for Rock Creek Park Trail. Notes that the applicant has submitted information requested in review of the concept design, including a description of the tree replacement strategy, and additional information regarding proposed wayfinding signage. Notes that 13 trees will be removed as a result of the project, all of which are either in poor condition or directly impacted by the project construction, which will be replaced at a one-to-one ratio, and that the cultural landscape report for the site limits the number of trees that can be planted, so the project will result in a net loss of tree canopy. Notes that the applicant has selected a trail alignment that allows for clear sightlines through the new tunnel at the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge, which is consistent with the commission request in review of the concept design. And notes that the applicant has selected a rectangular entry to the tunnel at the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge, and that details of the rectangular entry have been refined to better relate to the architectural detail of the bridge. That concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions at the project as are staff from the National Park Service.
Thank you, Mr. Gorbich. Any comments or questions? The commission?
I'll look it up.
Commissioner Cash.
I guess I'm just all about eliminating roads today. So one of the things that, going through this that I noticed was, in the segment between the Memorial Bridge and the Roosevelt Bridge, it's kind of one of those spaghettis of roads that were left over from some of the highways that we were supposed to get that we never did. And right around the Belvedere, I think it's great that we're creating more green space, but I wonder if the Park Service has looked at opportunities to create even more green space by either getting rid of, it's unclear depending on which map you look at, either the road that goes right along the waterfront, or the spaghetti that was added later on, just to create like a really big green space there, maybe pick one over the other. Because I mean, I think that, I'm guessing that the road right along the waterfront, which is the continuation of the Parkway, doesn't get as much traffic, and it looks like now we're gonna be making it a hard right to even continue going that way. So I just wonder if there's been any traffic studies, or if there's been a look to see if some of that around the volleyball courts could be reduced, either on the north side of the courts or right along the waterfront, maybe make the waterfront into just walking trails.
So you're talking about south of the Belvedere, as opposed to everything to the north?
Yeah, because originally, after you go south of the Belvedere, there's all those, the spaghetti of roads that's on kind of the top side of the volleyball course, and that was gonna go, I guess, into a tunnel that would have gone and connected on to 695 and all that. And that just never got built, like a lot of the roads out there.
So, I mean, I think in terms of road elimination, you know, what we've always...
It's like just direct all the traffic there to the north side and just cut off the access to the bottom.
To the north. Yeah, I mean, it is, Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway carries a lot of traffic in both directions, and especially in this direction, you know, there is a fair number of traffic that will come through and now go straight, but will eventually come through and make that harder right. I don't think we've looked at eliminating that roadway entirely at this point. I mean, we have been looking at any opportunity we can get to improve the spaghetti of roads that exist kind of to the east and northeast of this, the approaches to the TR Bridge, for example, which is just, you know, a nightmare of roads, and it makes it very, very hard for anybody who's, you know, say at the Vietnam Memorial, to walk over to the Belvedere. It's one of the reasons why we can't do very much with the Belvedere at this point, just because it's so difficult to walk there. In terms of the rest of it, I mean, we, I can't say that we have at this moment a clear vision for it, and certainly not a design effort for it, but we're taking advantage of moments like this to be able to make some of the small improvements that work us in that direction. The whole reason, or not the whole reason, but the funding for this project came out of Kennedy Center Pedestrian Improvements Project that was funded 15 years ago, something like that. I mean, we've been making some progress along those lines and studying this, and we saw an opportunity here to make, to make improvements in this particular area. So we're, you know, we're trying to leverage these small opportunities to do as much as we can. And you may be aware that there, that DOD is doing a study now of the freeway that's on the other side of the Kennedy Center, and whether that could take more, or all of the vehicular traffic, so that Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway, under the Kennedy Center along the river, might be reduced in its, I mean, the traffic load there might be reduced or even eliminated. So that's a study that DOD's working on right now. We're talking about that, and we hope to use that opportunity potentially to leverage changes as well.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to maybe ask if, how the park, today must be National Park Service Day, three of the four items, celebrate.
Isn't every day.
Let's celebrate. Yeah, exactly.
Particularly when the cherry blossoms are out.
Yeah. It is for me. I'll say that.
I guess I'd like to just understand a little better the thinking of choosing the rectangular opening of the trail versus the arched. When we met on this in preliminary, if you'd stop at 19, please, that'd be good. 19, 19, yeah. When we met earlier, commented on this, there was some discussion about whether we liked the arched or the rectangular opening, and I'm just curious how the applicant chose the rectangular version.
Sure. So, actually, I mean, for my purposes, it would be better to see the one that shows the comparison of the views, not that, not the approaches. Yeah, so this one. So when we first studied this, it was not the most developed study of the entry options. As you can sort of see, the rectangular entry is rather ordinary, and it's not very architectonic, if you know what I mean. I mean, it's just, you know, there are blocks at the top of that rectangular form, but nothing that holds them up. Right? So we, I think internally, thought that there was a lot of promise to the arched entry, and I think we certainly could have made that work. It would have been more complex in terms of how to make that, you know, retrofit that into the existing structure and stone surface. But in this circumstance, we were also persuaded, I think, by the Commission of Fine Arts in their preference to have the square entry. And I think that the logic there was to try to make this feel as minimal an intrusion as possible, and not try to equate it in any significant way to the arch of the roadway bridge. And so when it, you know, in many ways, this is primarily an aesthetic decision. There isn't really any functional difference. There might be some slight, I think, constructional advantage to the rectangular version of it, but that wasn't necessarily persuasive either. I think it was just the accumulation of factors that persuaded us to go in this, in this direction. Plus, I think that, you know, as we often have to, since we have to persuade both commissions to support our efforts, we tend to defer a little bit more to the Commission of Fine Arts on matters aesthetic and defer more to NCPC on matters of planning. So, you know, all of these things added together led us to the conclusion that this is the one that we should be submitting to this commission for approval, so.
Okay. Thank you. Reason I asked the question, and now, could you go back to 19? 19, this is interesting. So this is, imagine now you're a biker, but it's gonna be a lot narrower, right? And this is an arched... And this is an arched opening. This is already a long tunnel. And my observation is that the kind of arched opening would be more inviting, even though this is questionable, whether you'd say this is inviting, but I'm saying more inviting than a rectangular version, a mouse hole, if you will. That's a technical term. That's almost, we'll connect it to the tectonics in a little bit. But there's a softness to this in terms of if I'm entering this as a pedestrian or as a biker, seems to me, the experience of the biker pedestrian would be more inviting in an arched scenario. Now, if you could go back to maybe 23. And, you know, what we see, of course, is that that archway that we just were looking at, I guess, is on the right, is that right? Or on the left?
It's on the right.
On the right, that's what I thought, right? So, we sort of see the comparison, it's sort of cut off unfortunately, but in the photograph, but the kind of softness of the arched, yes, it is improved, I think, from the lower-left rectangular earlier study diagram that, Peter, you talked about. I think through the kind of softening of that entrance with kind of chamfered stone or whatever. But honestly, if I were going to enter one or the other as a human, I would find the arched one more inviting. Just curious if others would have an opinion about that.
I don't know if I'd see it as more inviting, but I'd see it as less confining in looking at that, because it looks like you're really being shot through a tunnel. And it's, if there's no difference in cost or architectonics, I would argue for the, for just that experiential difference, but I don't know how much it would actually make.
I think it's a matter of, it's sort of a philosophical difference in, as in preservation philosophy. Do you go out of your way to make it look like a modern intervention, in which case, not, not adopting the arch form, you would do that, right? And if you, if you took the other tack, which is to contextualize, you would go for an arch. I mean, I see what you're saying.
The question is, I don't, I don't think the bridge is actually historic, so in that sense.
No, I know, I'm just likening it to that sort of framework for making a choice.
I, but I look at it as the experience of the user, not, not the contextual architectonics of it. Seriously, I do think it's, it's a little less confining, and I think that's an important way to look at it.
It almost can look, it can look like a little, like a service door kind of thing, right? This is where we keep the drivers.
Exactly. Am I supposed to go in here?
Commissioner, I should add that every, in every cartoon I remember as a child, the mouse hole is arched.
I grant you that.
But that's where the mouse lives.
Was it Jerry, what was it?
Tom and Jerry.
Tom and Jerry, right, Tom and Jerry, right.
That's an entrance to their home.
The Acme Mouse Truck.
Right. So, I think, you know, I guess I'm interested in if the Park Service would consider an arched opening as something that would be more desirable to the pedestrian and biking experience in this long and kind of, I think, very important, we're spending a lot of money, effort, et cetera, on creating this, and so, why not make it as inviting as possible to...
With a barrel vault on the interior.
Yes.
Yeah.
With, with an arched or barrel vault.
Stipulating a barrel vault.
Pardon me. Should have, got to complete the sentence. That's what you're here for, Ms. Wright. Thank you.
So, it's very difficult for us, again, because we are trying to navigate the preferences of multiple commissions, and understanding fully that this commission has an approval authority, and the Commission of Fine Arts is advisory. However, we always take the advice of the Commission of Fine Arts. So, if I were to come back and get you to approve the arched opening, I would have to go back to the Commission of Fine Arts and get their approval for the arched opening. Honestly, I do not think that there is a substantial difference in the user experience between the two, and I think that the improvement that we get by moving pedestrians and cyclists out of the vehicle tunnel is so extraordinary that I don't think that anybody is going to be concerned, bothered, certainly not upset about the fact that we have a square opening, a rectangular opening rather than arched opening. This is, you know, one of the most remarkable things about this is that this idea came from federal highways and their engineering staff. They just said, hey, we think that's just a big empty space, why don't we take advantage of it? And they suggested that we put in this opening, and they worked through it all, and I think we're all so incredibly grateful that they did. So, I would say that we want to press forward with the rectangular entry, as has already been approved by the Commission of Fine Arts, and I'm not inclined to go back and revisit it.
Can I, can I say one more thing? I actually think, because I'm listening to what you're saying as well, I don't like the one on the left at all, but I am persuaded that the modifications that appear to me to be a rounded interior there on the right, a round, rounded edges and the...
Chamferd.
Chamferd. And the chamferd, it looks beveled to me, but chamferd opening softens it enough to be, to do what I think that you're trying to do. That's just my, that's my opinion.
I guess, pardon me, sure.
I really wish we had a picture that was further removed from it, because you don't really get the sense of the two, the two entrances with such a close cut shot of the one on the right, to my, my opinion. I think you'd get a very different. I also think that, I've been, I've been thinking about tunnels I've been through in many places, and the vaulted ceilings tend to be more accommodating, because you feel like there's, you know, you got like a, rather than going through a shaft, a square shaft. And so, I think that it's not only the outside arcs that would be more receptive to people in my mind, but it's also the vaulted inside that you walk, because that's part of the concern, right? And I think that would be much more, you know, accommodating, because kind of, you have a arched top, not like a square thing you're going through. I don't know, what's, is there a cost differential here, or is it that big a difference in cost in doing one or the other?
I don't think we know enough at this moment to say that there's a substantial cost difference.
Did, when highways did this, did they do it both ways, or they just suggested, you know, did they give you the arch as well as this, or just the idea to do it from the...
We spent a lot of time working with them about options for openings, and we studied, I don't know, probably six or eight different versions.
They studied the arch, they had no position one way or the other, arch or square or rectangle.
You know, I think that if, when it come, if it comes down to a cost issue, they might have a preference one way or another, but we haven't developed it enough to know that there is a cost issue. Again, I think there isn't, there, from a, from a constructability point of view, there is certain advantages to having the square opening.
Yeah.
Because we are being, we are able to insert new stone without having to cut and create that arched opening. And that's, that is more challenging. Now, is it a substantial difference in the overall cost of the project? I don't know, but I can tell you, it's, it's easier to construct the rectangular entry than it is...
Well, we're going to live with this for a long time.
Yeah.
And bikers are very sensitive people.
And, you know, it depends.
And pedestrians.
And pedestrians.
Not just bikers.
And pedestrians, exactly. So, I think that we got to be aware of that phenomenon, and it seems to me that, in all candid, Mr. Chairman, I think, I support your view. I just think it's, like, it's just, it's much softer, it's in my mind, so.
If you could go back to 19, please. I think that's what, maybe, Commissioner Dixon, you were referring to.
Yeah.
If this were squared off, it would be a very different feel.
Exactly.
Inside, so both the, the kind of invitation as you approach, but also while you're inside, there is a different, softer experience that one would, one would have here, in my opinion.
So, I would only observe that this tunnel is far, far wider and a bit, just a bit taller. Can we go back another slide or two?
All the more reason that it's...
No, no, there we go. So, I mean, you can get a better sense here, what we're seeing on the, on the left is only about a third of the width of that tunnel, and I, you know, what I would challenge you on is whether you think that seeing an arched opening at that far end is going to be a significant difference, because I don't believe that it is, and I, you know, as sensitive as us cyclists are, I don't think that I would have a problem with it. I mean, we can check with Commissioner Trueblood to see if he has an differing opinion about it.
What's the width of the road, I mean, of the...
14.
Huh?
14.
No, not the width of the path, but rather, what's the distance that you'll be in, under the tunnel, under the roadway?
The length of the tow?
I don't know, they're not hand.
50 feet?
How many lanes up top?
It's, I think it's six lanes on top, so it's going to be 70, 60, 70, 80.
60 plus. I'd also just maybe ask Ms. Skyler for clarification on the question of whether, if we were to change this approval through our EDR, whether the National Park Service would have to go back to CFA for their approval for design guidance.
Well, you could, you could go back for, for a staff referral, couldn't you, on something, on one component of it?
I don't know that if, whether, I mean, that's up to them.
Let's have Ms. Skyler. Let's have Ms. Skyler.
I think it's up to the applicant. We have had applicants in the past who have refused to go to CFA multiple times. They are advisory, you are approval. Changes that CFA makes to your decision would have to come back here, would have to come back here, but I can't say the same is true for CFA.
And I would just say that we do that. We would do that. I would have to go back there, because we won't go forward with a design that does not have their approval. I don't know what level of approval would be required.
That would be up to them to decide.
But I also know that we have submitted this to you, and we are asking for you to approve this.
Right.
So, if you don't want to approve this, then I think your option is to not approve it. And I don't, I don't see why that's necessary. I really don't. I mean, I think, I appreciate all the concern and the interest, but I think that we're overthinking a really small thing.
Well, I just want to point out that our preference was stated when we saw this the first time it was chosen to be, I want to say, I don't want to say ignored, but maybe not considered as strongly as we might have liked. So, that was a decision of, of the CFA, which we can't comment on here. Yes, sir.
I'm getting a little confused procedurally, and I don't want to make procedural issue deciding, but because I'm hearing Park Service say that they will not go forward with our decision, which is legally binding, without going back and getting the Fine Arts Commission to accept it. So, what happens if they don't accept it? I mean, you know, are we...
Then the project could die.
Okay, so, that makes them, that makes a pretty strong force within the Park Service that they...
Correct, they are. We regard their opinions with the...
Well, I guess I'm, because I'm, I guess I'm a little, feel like we still have some strength too, but maybe I'm wrong.
Absolutely, this commission has great strength. But again, as I, when I said when I started off, that we tend to look to the Planning Commission on matters of planning, and the Commission of Fine Arts on issues of aesthetics. And this boils down to a primarily aesthetic issue.
Yeah. Well, for what it's worth, I would do the same thing with the GSA. We would, I mean, and it's a matter of managing relationships and all that, because this is not the only rodeo, right? So, and the CFA feels like we do, they don't really, they, I don't think they would appreciate having people say, well, thanks very much, but we're going to do something else. We've done that, but, but it, it happens through it, there would have to be some furtherance of the conversation. Chances are good that CFA's not going to die on a hill this small either, because it is, it's not, it's a, it's an important design feature, but it's not, you know, a capital construction thing. I mean, it's not a hu, a whole building, this, whatever, you get my drift. So, I'm, I mean, if, I would also feel compelled, if it were my project, to go back to CFA and say, we, NCPC doesn't agree with this design detail, and how are we going to resolve this, right?
Mr. White.
I think that's an interesting way to look at it, and just looking at the letters that were submitted, it says that the commission expressed a preference for the rectangular opening, and they also recommended making the passage wider than the trail itself, which we haven't really talked about, and I think is actually a really good idea, if this becomes a really popular trail. So, I guess it is a matter of just continuing the conversation or going back, how important is this to the Fine Arts Commission, if it's a preference, or if it's the only way we approved it, if it stays rectangular? I'm just trying to understand how important it is to them.
You know, I wish I understood...
Why this project would die.
I wish I under, fully understood and could divine Commission of Fine Arts decision-making. I can't. So, we go on what's on paper, and we go what we get, what we get from commission staff in conversation with them. So, you know, in, in certain circumstances, again, because they, this was, this is a circumstance where they approved it at a relatively early stage, and delegated the final details to working with staff, and we have been working on doing that.
So, could we have, I'm sorry, could we have another conversation based on today's conversation about the arch, the perspective of...
Well, certainly if the commission won't approve, if this commission won't approve it and requires that we look at an arched opening, we'll have to do that. But it's certainly not my preference. Again, I think that, you know, we have a perfectly acceptable solution, and that this commission should approve it today.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Cash.
Oh, pardon me.
So, can I just ask one more question? So, is, was there a conversation about making this a little wider, so it's not on the edge of the trail, as they suggested in here?
I don't recall the specifics on that. Maybe somebody on the staff of the mall knows.
Just making the passage wider than the trail, so you have a little buffer. I thought that was an interesting idea, because we hadn't...
Yeah, I, I just don't recall, so.
From a safety perspective.
Sean, do you recall anything?
What I vaguely recall is it had to do with the structural components of the bridge abutment. The bridge is owned by the District of Columbia, not the National Park Service. So, the bridge engineers looked at really how the, that abutment is made internally, and what could really fit in there, because I think, and I think that, that's the width that it, that it could, you know, really structurally handle.
That's helpful, thank you.
I know there are structural support beams in there, that one of the original alignments had interrupted and caused engineering problems from the previous submission. We'd heard a little of that.
Commissioner Cash.
So, I actually think that looking at this slide is very useful, because it's actually not as rectangular as the original stuff that we saw, there's just a little bit of a bevel in the upper right. So, it's not, it's actually not that stark, I don't think, looking from this view, and I think this view makes it look a lot more acceptable than the other one, where it looked like a very hard corner, so. And I think that you could also mitigate a lot of the possible concerns over the rectangular design here with making sure there's adequate lighting inside and all that. So, I think that, that, well, it sounds like there might be a preference by some for, for the arch. It sounds like if the Park Service and CFA have a strong feeling, I think that maybe there's other ways to mitigate some of the concerns with this. If you're moving through more slowly, make sure you have adequate light to make, to brighten it up some, because the vehicular, you have a couple of those just tube lights, but you're going through it at 30 miles an hour. So, if you could just like maybe do something with, with the lighting and brighten it up a little bit, I think that could mitigate some of the concerns and preserve what sounds like is Park Service's preference, and something that CFA's weighed in on. And I, I still want to reiterate, in looking at this, it's not just kind of soft, I think there's enough of a bevel there that it makes it, it cuts down on the, the... there's enough of a bevel there that it makes it, it cuts down on the really harsh corners at the top, and the light's already on, and I think if you just brighten it up a little bit, that could address a lot of the concerns that you might get out of a little bit of a curve too, so.
I would, I would say, one of the things that has been a strong consideration is the lighting of it, and making sure that it is, that it's continuous, and that it's maintainable, and that we don't have light fixtures that, you know, collect birds' nests and things like that, just to make sure that it always stays clean and neat and well-lit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
I think that, two things. One, I'm very persuaded by our D.C. Council's representative here, and since we own the bridge, which is nice to know we own its house, and he seems to be okay with this structure. And I do think this is a better view, and given that hat, I'm going to be leaning a little bit more towards his leaning towards this. That's one issue. So I'm saying I'm tended to support where the Park Service wants to go, and I think that this rectangular thing, we can live with, given this view. But on the second issue, I think this whole dynamic of who approves what and how we do that approval is, has been a historical interest in this commission, as I mentioned to you a couple days ago, about who, how do you, how does this work? And do we really, you know, we're going to be like the Congress, where we give the President the right to realign money, and we'll give up our authority, is this our authority, and that we shouldn't have to have second review of it? But honestly, so that's other second issue, which is broader and maybe more sensitive. I support, I'm backing off, Mr. Chairman. I like this view, I think this is great, and it's D.C.'s bridge.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the EDR, and would ask for a second. There we go.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One. Thank you, the most in passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the dialogue.
That was the important part.
Okay. That covers our action items for today, which was, I think, a very wonderful program of topics, and now we have an information presentation on another really important topic for this city and the nation, the Monumental Core Streetscape Project. Ms. Daufer will make this presentation.
So good afternoon, members of the commission. The Physical Planning Division is pleased to provide an information presentation on the Monumental Core Streetscape Project lighting policy and framework. We're currently working on the Monumental Core Streetscape Project. In September 2018, we briefed you on this multi-phased update of the 1992 Streetscape Manual, the purpose of which is to provide guidelines to federal and local agencies for coordinated and consistent streetscape treatment on roadways in the vicinity of the National Mall. The Streetscape Project has four components, which you see on the right, and we are currently working on item number one, the Streetscape Framework, including the lighting policy, which is today's focus. The purpose of today's presentation is to brief you on the existing and proposed lighting for the Monumental Core, introduce our lighting policy and framework, as well as some technical aspects of lighting. This will provide the background and foundation for our next presentation in late summer or early fall, when we come back to the commission for concept review and request for comments. So today, we'll explain why we need a lighting policy now, why it's important, what the lighting policy and framework is, what its foundations are, where it applies, and what is its content. So why do we need a lighting policy now? As I mentioned, we're updating the Streetscape Manual, which includes lighting. At the same time, we're collaborating with the city's Smart Street Lighting Project, led by DDOT and the Office of Public Private Partnerships, or OP3. This project will convert the city's 75,000 streetlights from mostly high-pressure sodium to LED by as early as 2022. This collaboration is essential, because DDOT has many streetlights in and around the National Mall, where different jurisdictions come together. This diagram shows streetlight fixture ownership, with DDOT in red, the National Park Service in green, Smithsonian in yellow, and the architect of the Capitol in blue. Why is this important? Lighting is fundamental to our experience of the Capitol City, contributing to its visual image, identity, and atmosphere, as well as safety and security. This nighttime image of the Capitol Building and Washington Monument shows how light is currently working. The darker, softer landscapes elevate the form and visual prominence of our civic structures, which are illuminated in white light. This view across the Potomac River, which we'll focus on, since it's the setting for many of the monuments and memorials, shows the darker landscape settings along the riverfront, which highlight civic structures and protect the river's natural resources. This aerial shows current differences in the color of city lights. You see the visual contrast of the city's yellow-orange high-pressure sodium streetlights, and the Monumental Core's white metal halide street and building lights. So today, the color of Monumental Core lighting stands out from the rest of the city. We can imagine that when the city converts all of their streetlights to LED, everything will be a warm white light. Since the strong contrast in streetlight color will no longer exist, the lighting will become more homogenous, and it will be more important to focus on the Monumental Core's building lighting to add variation and character. What is the lighting policy and framework? It's a policy-level document that identifies structures, landscapes, and streets that are important to consider for nighttime illumination of the Capitol City because of their symbolic importance and visual prominence. It establishes a hierarchy for these elements and outlines general lighting principles. Before we got started, we looked at the approach of other capital cities that they're taking for their lighting plans, which range in level of detail. We looked at London's lighting plan, Ottawa's Capitol Illumination Plan, and Canberra's lighting policy. The work that we are doing is most similar in detail to Canberra. And how are we doing the work? What are its foundations? We're building on the Streetscape Framework that we presented in September. The framework identifies street categories shown on the left, which organize Monumental Core streets according to their national and local identity, and spatial and visual relationships to nationally significant structures. The categories include radiating and edging streets shown in magenta, and connecting and traversing streets shown in light pink. Here, local streets are shown in white. Some of these streets connect to destinations outside of the 1992 manual boundary, which is shown in dashed gray, and we are working closely with the city to study these areas and determine how to coordinate federal and local guidance. We're also considering changing lighting technology. The city is moving away from high-pressure sodium lights, and the federal partners are moving away from their metal halide lights, and everyone is moving towards the energy-efficient LED. We're building off Washington's historic fixtures and plans, particularly the 1977 and 87 PADC lighting plans, which used light to highlight important structures, as well as CFA's 1992 conceptual lighting plan that proposed using pure white light to highlight the LaFonte and Macmillan plans. So where does this apply? Although prior city lighting plans covered the entire LaFonte City, we are focused on the downtown Monumental Core, the symbolic center of the city within the vicinity of the National Mall. We're building on federal and local policies. There are several policy statements that specifically address lighting, and our new Parks and Open Space element recently added more lighting guidance. So what does the lighting policy and framework say? In collaboration with the working group, we've established these goals for the lighting guidance. First, to create a clear lighting hierarchy that respects and protects the symbolic meaning and nighttime appearance of iconic structures, landscapes, and streets; to recognize the nighttime appearance of the existing urban context that surrounds us; to address contemporary street lighting issues, namely the switch to LED; and to build upon the Capitol City's historic lighting plans by carrying forward important principles. So first, to establish a lighting hierarchy, we identified criteria for each tier, one through three. The criteria relate to symbolic meaning and spatial and visual prominence. This is not a ranking, but helps to differentiate lighting treatment. For example, tier one includes things like the U.S. Capitol, National Mall, or Independence Avenue. Tier two includes Union Station, East Potomac Park, or Massachusetts Avenue, and tier three includes things like the National Gallery of Art, or Marion Park. Next, we've assigned a tier to each of the following elements addressed in the lighting framework, which includes structures, landscapes, and streetscapes. I'll walk through each of these elements to explain the current policies we're building off of, the proposed tiers, and the proposed lighting principles. So I'll start with structures. We currently have lighting policies that state the Washington Monument and Capitol are the most visually prominent. We've expanded on that and categorized these structures into tiers, and a full listing of them is on page six of your packet. Again, the tiers are organized by spatial, symbolic importance, and visual prominence. They do not indicate the level of brightness. So the principles here are that buildings should have a clear lighting hierarchy, and that their nighttime appearances should convey symbolic meaning. I'll note that just for this lighting framework, we expanded our context to include other important structures, like St. Elizabeth's Frederick Douglass House and the National Cathedral. While the framework does not dictate how property managers should use lighting, it does outline the principles that architectural lighting should enhance buildings while also protecting the night sky. This addresses the potential for light to showcase building features and character, which varies with each individual building, based on its role, use, and design. Washington, D.C. is a city of white light. White light is important to conveying a timeless image, reverence, dignity, and respect, and these aspects of white light are important for our national spaces, which have commemorative and ceremonial uses. So while other cities like New York and Pittsburgh are trending towards using colored light, the principle here is that white light is important to the Capitol City's identity and the harmony among its civic structures. Almost all permanent lining for important civic structures is white. However, to celebrate art or special events, some buildings use colored light displays on a temporary basis for several weeks or days. So next, I'll discuss landscapes. We currently have lighting policies that discuss maintaining the dimness of the Monumental Core parks and minimizing light pollution, and we've expanded on current policies and categorized landscapes into tiers, and again, a full listing is on page nine of your packet. Landscape tiers are also organized by symbolic importance and visual prominence, and the principles here are that the National Mall lighting should accentuate its iconic civic structures, and that LaFonte planned parks and open spaces should be highlighted by perimeter street lighting. Landscapes are also subcategorized by settings to indicate their role as nationally significant open space, natural or waterfront space, or urban or residential space. Each setting has special considerations for light, either requiring brightness for visibility and safety, or requiring dimness to protect the environment or historic character. Generally, the settings, rather than the tiers, indicate the level of brightness, so the principles here are that lighting in urban areas should be brighter, and lighting in the other areas should be dimmer. This map depicts the setting for each landscape type, and I'll briefly note that the Potomac and Anacostia Rivers have different characters and contexts. So the settings and principles help to protect the federal interest areas and respond to these different contexts. From this 2016 image, you can see the dimness along the Potomac River and National Mall, which is more ceremonial, versus the brightness surrounding the Anacostia River, which is more urban. You can also see how D.C. is illuminated more brightly than the neighboring counties in Maryland and Virginia. This is because of differences in fixture and light bulb types. Cut-off and uplight are the technical terms used to describe the amount of light permitted to shine upward. To protect the night sky, full cutoff is desirable, however, this is hard to achieve in our historic Washington Globe fixtures. There's an ongoing discussion about the amount of light that should shine upward from the Globes. Currently, the Streetscape Manual specifies that 15% of light should shine upward to illuminate the Globe's nighttime silhouette, and 85% of light should shine downward to illuminate the ground plane. Next, I'll talk about streetscapes. The city has policies that support strengthening, street lighting, to highlight road function and wayfinding. The Streetscape lighting tiers build upon the urban design Streetscape framework and the principle of creating visually consistent corridors. Streetscape tiers are organized by their symbolic importance and their role in supporting the visual prominence of vista focal points, and examples of these streets are on page 13 of your packet. Streetlight quality is important for visual character and safety for vehicles and pedestrians. And to get a better handle on light quality, we'll focus on two technical items. First, color temperature, and second, brightness. Color temperature is a technical term used to describe the visual warmness or coolness of light. It is measured in Kelvins, and higher Kelvin numbers equate to a bluer light, while lower Kelvin numbers equate to a more orange light. Differences in color temperature are noticeable from aerial photographs, as we've seen, but are also noticeable at ground level. This image shows Los Angeles's LED streetlight retrofit, so here, you're seeing old high-pressure sodium lights in the background at about 2,000 Kelvin, and new LED lighting in the foreground at about 4,000 Kelvin. LEDs first hit the market at about 5,000 Kelvin, but as technology evolves, are now able to go as low as 2,700 Kelvin, which is better for human and environmental health. However, these lower color temperatures are more difficult and expensive to manufacture. This photo also shows the visible transition in streetlight color temperature, and this is something that we want to avoid in Monumental Core streets, even though DDOT's proposal would transition between 2,700 Kelvin and 3,000 Kelvin. This diagram illustrates CFA's 1992 plan, which had a vision for how to address streetlight color temperature that was grounded in historic preservation and urban design. Everything within the Monumental Core was to be a pure white color light, as well as the LaFonte radial and axial streets and reservations. So the important aspects of this plan are that street lighting enhances the plan for the city of Washington, particularly important radial avenues, and it makes a strong connection between the Monumental Core and downtown. However, it does use white light in some residential areas. I'll note that when the city converts to LED, it is going to significantly change the streetlight color and character of the Monumental Core. DDOT is using a systematic approach to determine streetlight color based on road, vehicular function, and land use. This approach balances diverse public opinions with a focus on safety. Federal objectives are to consider urban design, historic preservation, and the environment, and we are working with the city to balance both federal and local objectives. Next, I'll discuss brightness. Brightness refers to the amount of light emitted from the light bulb, which contributes to the perception of a place being bright or dim. Like landscapes, we've organized streetscapes into different settings, which generally indicate their brightness. The principles here are that urban areas should be brighter, nationally significant open spaces, natural waterfront, and residential spaces should be dimmer. Each image shows DDOT's proposed wattages, and some proposed wattages are up to four times brighter than what federal partners are using. So for example, Independence Avenue is proposed at 215 watts, while the National Park Service uses 55 watts for their roads. However, DDOT will have capabilities to dim lights by 50%, so the 200 watts could go to 100, but not to 50. So over the coming months, we'll be working to resolve these wattage differences. This map depicts the settings for each Streetscape, and the principles here are that particularly on urban streets, we can use brighter light to highlight the plan for the city of Washington, and we should continue to protect the mall's viewshed and keep the central panel free from streetlights. Continuing on brightness, the 1977 and 87 PADC lighting plans focused on both street lighting and building lighting, which work together to highlight focal points like the U.S. Capitol Building, National Portrait Gallery, and other civic buildings. Applying that same logic, we've identified streets with reciprocal radiating and edging vistas to significant illuminated structures. The principle here is that streetlight brightness should elevate and enhance views to illuminated structures. To achieve this, we'll need to evaluate... To achieve this, we'll need to evaluate streetlight brightness and dimness, and it's our understanding that we can work with DDOT on dimming the lights on these streets in the future. Regarding next steps, we are continuing our work on lighting through the summer. We anticipate providing an information presentation to CFA in May, and we hope to return to you in late summer or early fall for a concept review of the urban design Streetscape Framework and lighting package. So, in conclusion, the lighting policy and framework addresses four topics, the symbolic and visual hierarchies for structures, landscapes, and streetscapes, which establishes a general frame, framework for how we structure city lighting. It addresses temporarily lighting buildings with color, how we protect the night sky, and it will address street lighting, and how we retain the Capitol City's nighttime character, considering street lighting is going to change the way the city looks. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This, uh, if you can, if you can express a sincere appreciation to both the staff and also the agencies that NCPC has been working with to develop this new lighting and framework plan. I mean, this is setting the stage, if you will, for our national Monumental Core to play out. That stage work is so critical to how we view what we admire and, and call our national treasure. So, we really appreciate the care and attention that so many are applying to this in such a thoughtful way. So, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Dauker?
I, I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I had gotten a preview of this presentation from staff, and I also really appreciate the, the way they have tried to address the entirety of the issue and explain it to all of us in, in understandable terms and to make clear how, you know, the evolution of technology is, is changing the circumstances of Wash, of lighting this city and how it has to, you know, we have to make adaptations, and I think it's all for the good. I mean, there's certainly more things, I think, that will happen over time, but I think it will be, in the long run, certainly an improvement in energy efficiency and, to some extent, safety, and we just want to make sure we maintain the right character for the city. So, it's great. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I've got one.
Okay. Mr. Trueblood.
Thank you. And, and thank the, the staff for this. I also, I was able to get a pre-briefing, so I appreciate this, and, and the Office of Planning as well, as DDOT have been, have been working on it. There's one question, I guess, that comes that I just have, which is, you had mentioned the 85%, 15% standard. Is there any thought that that might change, or is there, you know, based on that? It seems as much a technology question as it is anything else, so, or do you think that is kind of, that is the way it will be and we'll just figure out how to adapt to it?
So, as I mentioned, there's cutoff and there's uplight. There's some internal shielding that can diminish the amount of uplight that occurs while still maintaining the appearance of the Globe. That is with the acrylic going all the way to the top. To date, the 15% uplight has been the balance that was found between aesthetics and environment, but that's something that, that could be subject to change, given our ongoing talks.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further business here, I think this concludes this open session agenda. Thank you very much. Meeting is now adjourned.